I'd like to call the order of the Graham County Board of Education regular meeting, May 3rd, 2022. Mr. Moody, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Dear God, for goodness sake, thank this time today, Lord, your marvelous grace and your son that came with that rose again for our seniors. Lord, thank you for our physical friends, Lord, and our military, Lord, and our veterans. It's a belated blessed day. And just thank you for going on, General Lord, for the country, more particularly our schools and school, Lord, just to bless them with wisdom and days that they watch out for these kids and the order of their kids. And I may just remember, Lord, that those who have a faith on kids' lives, Lord, just help us to be full of grace and wisdom and peace, Lord, to be able to help them on their journey in life, Lord, as they grow up. And I pray to you, Lord, we have Mother's Day coming up, Lord, and I just thank you for giving mothers, God, the mothers, Lord, mothers hold a special place in your heart, Lord, and they sure hold a special place in ours. So I just bless all mothers, Lord, this week and bear them, and thank you for them. Thank you for all you've done for us, Lord, you're the best, just my prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we approve the agenda, we have an amendment to the agenda. Letter M will be child nutrition price increase for the fiscal year 23, and Ms. Moody will update us on that. Do I have a motion now to approve the agenda with the amendment? Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the prior minutes of April 5th, 2022? Do I have a second? All in favor? The floor is now open for public comment here. Do I have a motion to close public comment here? Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, reports and discussion items. Mr. Matheson, start with you.
Okay, so I know Miss Nunn just handed out a list of some of the dates of events that are coming up, but I wanted to cover four or five of the high school. On Thursday, we will have senior celebration day. We'll start that by 10 o'clock, and at that date, kids will... We've asked them where the church, the colleges they're going to, uniforms, the jobs they're going into, they'll have sign, they'll have lunch for them there at the high school, everything will be outside, hopefully the weather will cooperate. I'd like to invite y'all to come down and be part of celebrating our seniors. On May the 13th, we will have Field Day at RHS. On May the 23rd is the R Club banquet, that will be at the football stadium, and that will start at 6 o'clock, and we're going to have a cookout, like we did last year, it went real well, I thought people enjoyed that, and so we're going to keep it the same way that we had it last year. On May the 26th, we will have our academic banquet, and the sending out invitations to the board, I'd like to invite all of y'all to be there, bring, you know, your spouse if you would like, and that night, we will start at 6 o'clock in the Commons area with turkey and dressing dinner. Our guest speaker for the night is Mr. John T. Barrett. He is an attorney that lives in Silva, North Carolina, and he was a graduate of Mountain View High School, and we're excited to have him coming to be our guest speaker that night. And he has also purchased a book, The Hero Code, by Admiral W. L. H. McRaven for all of our seniors. And I got a copy of this book, and I started reading it. It's really good, it's about basically having high character and how that helps you, you know, through your life, and really good. And Admiral McRaven has had two or three number-one bestsellers. One, I think, is Make Your Bed is the title of it, and so this book is really good, I'm excited about him giving this to our seniors. Our back lawn service will be on Wednesday, June the 1st, at 7 o'clock. Again, that will be at the football stadium, and our guest speaker this year is Reverend Brian Stevens. Graduation will be on Friday, June the 3rd, and that will be at 8 o'clock at the football stadium. We will start testing the last week of school, so our tests will be May the 23rd through the 27th, and then our sports teams have had a really successful spring. Our softball team secured their sixth straight Smoky Mountain Conference championship yesterday with a win over at Hiwasi Dam, and they will be playing Hiwasi Dam again this Thursday, and it will be fan appreciation, and there will be a Low Country Bowl after the game. So again, invite the board to come down and celebrate with these girls of their championship. Our baseball team, they're fighting really hard to earn a spot in the playoffs, and they've won four out of their last five games. They lost a really close heartbreaking game yesterday, but they get another chance at Hiwasi Dam on Thursday, and I believe we can come out on top, and they should make the playoffs. Our track team will be competing in the Smoky Mountain Conference Championship tomorrow at Cherokee, and then they'll follow that up in about a week and a half with the regionals. And we've got several opportunities, I feel like, to win state championships in track, so that's exciting. And our golf team finished second in the Smoky Mountain Conference, which is fantastic considering we don't have a golf course here in Graham County, and they are actually competing in the regionals today up in Newland. So we've had really good spring sports, and excited for some of these kids to get in the playoffs and have a chance to go win a state championship, maybe. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Got a lot, not as much going on at the Middle Schools High School, but we have on Wednesday, tomorrow, we have Nick Nichols coming to speak with our students about the 150th anniversary of Graham County and give them some, a little history lesson. And on May 13th, we have our spring dance for middle school this year, they're doing the hoedown, so kids are excited about that. And then we start testing on May 16th, and on May 25th, our student council will take a trip, and I will mention later in field trips, I think, is the last board meeting, that we were approved for them to take a field trip to go to Six Flags, and she would like to change that for safety reasons and go to Hollywood. She thinks that would be a little bit safer, so we can look at that when it comes to them. We have just finished the last check-ins, and our I-ready assessments are all done. We have started meeting with students and parents about next year and getting excited about kids that are moving up to eighth grade and meeting with some kids that are at our academy about transitioning or what their plans are going to be. We will start this week, register kids for next year, and our eighth-grade students were able to go to Tri-County, which I'm sure Francine is going to tell you a little bit about that. That was a gear-up trip, that they had a great time and learned a lot. And then this last week, we had Shannon Knott's STEM club, they did a virtual STEM conference that they really enjoyed, and then, of course, we completed the eighth-grade trip, which was a wonderful trip, we had a great time, I think the kids enjoyed it. I don't know how much y'all have heard about the eighth-grade trip, but I said this eighth-grade group of kids will, their children will never see Ocracoke Island and never ride a ferry, probably. We had, went over that morning, it was raining a little bit, and we stopped to, the gas, the bus needed fuel, and we stopped and we ran, you have to get off the bus when the bus fuels, that's a law. So the kids went to a little station, and it was where all the fishermen were coming in, and we were talking to them, and the fishermen's like, I wouldn't go to Ocracoke, the storm's probably coming in and you might get stranded, and we're thinking, oh, we're not going to get stuck. So we get over there, and we have a picnic at the park ranger station, and then the park ranger comes out and says, Ms. Walsh, a storm's brewing, and the line to get back across is starting to get long, you better get in line. So we saw nothing at Ocracoke except the park ranger station, and we had a picnic, and we stayed in line for about five and a half hours waiting to get on a ferry to get back across the island. I had called Ms. Knott and Mr. Moody thinking we were going to have to sleep on the bus. We finally got on a ferry about 10:00 p.m. at night, I think it was 10:10, and we missed our dinner that night, and so I thought, well, no problem, I'll call Domino's Pizza and have pizza delivered to the hotel. Domino's could not accommodate us because they didn't have the staff, so we went panic mode and called a grocery store, food line, and they were closing, but the manager was so nice, she said, if you'll just call me when you get in the parking lot, I'll open the doors and let you come in and shop. And so Shannon Knott and Brian Beasley and Cody George stopped the van there, and they went in and bought everything you could cook in a microwave, so... So the kids were like, Ms. Walsh, what are we having for dinner? I said, the same thing you eat at home. So we had, the kids said that was the best hot pocket that ever ate, but, you know, they learned a lesson about how to be flexible, so it was good.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. Ms. Hoo.
So we had kindergarten registration last Friday. We had 60 kids enroll, so if you will think about the kindergarten, the K-2 or K-3 class-size law, right now, with, based on enrollment, I have enough classes or enough students to have four kindergarten classrooms, as of right now. If our enrollment stays between 60 and 72, we will keep four kindergarten classrooms. If we get 73 kids, then we will have to go up to five kindergarten classrooms, so that's just where we are, and with class-size law, that's how we have to keep our finger on that number and just continuously look. So right now, we are currently at having four kindergarten classrooms next year. On May the 12th, you'll see that the RAS has Field Day. We have a lot of carnival games and different things that we're going to have set up for the kids, I think they're going to enjoy it. We have Moving Up to Big School Night on the 12th, and that's for a lot of our preschoolers that are in our preschoolers or in, or in our preschools, or anyone who just has a child that's registered for kindergarten can come and meet the teachers and kind of get a tour and just to work through some of the little nerves that some of them have about moving up to big schools, so that's, that's on the 12th. And just like the middle school, we test the last 10 days of school, and our testing begins on the 16th. The fifth-grade student council came up with the idea for the last 26 days of school, we've been having the ABC days at the elementary school, so every day is a different letter. Today's H, so it's Hat Day or Hawaii Day. I didn't wear my Hawaiian shirt and shorts to the board meeting, but I did put on my flirty pants for you today, but the kids have really been enjoying the different days. Everybody's looking forward to O, which is outside, and Oreo Day, so we've got some Oreos ready to go. We did have our first annual Charleston fifth-grade trip, which turned out to be a good success. The kids and the parents that went gave us really good feedback. Thankfully, we didn't run into the weather problem like the eighth grade did, but we got great feedback. I had some kids say, this is supposed to be a trip, but I just feel like I've had to learn a lot of history and science, so they were shocked that you could learn things on the trip. And we took a dinner cruise, and we had students say, hey, Miss College, you need to try this, it's not just bussin', it's bussin'-bussin', which means really, really, really good. And she turned around, and he's just stuck a part of his dinner in her mouth, and she was like, oh yeah, that's really good, but you need to eat that. And he said, don't worry, they give you two forks, and that's my sharing fork. We had a great time.
Did you get to go to the fork, something?
We did.
Very good.
We did.
Chris.
Okay, I will add to that, is we do have preschool graduation coming up on May the 31st over at the high school, and then you'll be hearing from me shortly about federal programs updates with grants.
Okay.
All right, so since we're wrapping up the school year, I'm happy to report that we have served over 200 students this year, so I'm glad we can offer this program. Our goal is 135, so we went well over that. The past month, we had our seventh annual pond derby, we had a great turnout, lots of parents came out, so we were very pleased with that. So we're just wrapping up these last few weeks and getting ready for summer. We've got some really fun camps. A few of our themes are agriculture, STEM, culinary arts, community helpers, so we're really excited for a busy summer.
Francine, Francine, you...
I forgot to say that we have a baseball and softball game today against Hiwasi Dam, and then we have our last game at Cherokee on Friday. If our girls win both games, then they'll be, there will be a three-way tie for first place, so we're hoping that they can play it through, so.
Good. I know you haven't seen me for a while, I've been a little busy with grandchildren at school. Have another grandbaby due like any time, I could get a phone call.
All right, so of course, end of the year, getting everything together, we had a Rising to High School Night for the eighth graders that were coming up to ninth grade. That was a big, big success with their parents. The parents could find out about what high school schedules were about, credits, block schedules were different, so there was a lot of good information shared there. I just found out we have a date for our Rising Seniors now, I think, Mr. Matheson, are you aware of it? May 13th. Jenny P. is going to join us. I got a text this morning that that's the date, I guess we'll be, if you report. March 13th, the Rising Seniors will have a program for them and their parents. About what day is it?
May 3rd.
May 3rd. What else?
March.
March, hello, I am tired.
Let's field day.
May 13th, yes, let's field day. Yes, but that night will be for parents. We've been busy purchasing items for the next school year, for the summer. I was approved to buy some drums for our new drum class that we're going to have. It was over $6,000 for drums and equipment, got approved, part of that's already been shipped in, we're really excited about that. I was approved for film equipment, we're going to have a film camp this summer and start a film club for those students who think they may be wanting to go into that industry. We've been purchasing, purchasing a lot of materials for the greenhouse for middle school and high school, and hopefully all that will arrive this summer, and we can start using it next fall in the ag classes. We're going to use parts of it already this summer, but not the full greenhouse. I purchased headphones for the middle school, for them to have some in each classroom for testing as needed, and for our STEM class, we bought some really nice Bose speakers that can be used for them to present. There will be a conference 17th, 18th, and 19th in Asheville. It's called the Academic Innovation Conference, and we have a group of students that have been working on a project, and that will be presented there, so we needed the speakers, so I was able to buy them. This summer, talk about busy, when I counted them up this morning, I have nine camps so far planned. Some will be two to three days, some will be five days, four days, depending on what the teacher wanted to propose. Some of those camps will have to go out of state for trips, so I wanted to ask your permission for those. On June 16th, we want to take the filmmaking camp to the Savannah College of Art and Design, their campus that's in Atlanta. They'll be going to the CNN building to see how filming does for TV shows. They're trying to get into Tyler Perry's studio in Atlanta, if that doesn't work. J.C. Rogers, who's the teacher for that, is looking at other studios. Approximately 12 students, and there'll be three chaperones, and I've already booked a bus for the summer, so we're good on that. On June 29th, our STEM space camp, taught by Mandy Adams, would like to go to the planetarium at Young Paris College and also tour that college that day. Again, we're keeping small groups, this would be 12 with three chaperones. On July 11th through the 22nd, that's not out of state, but that's an out-of-state design camp, where the students will actually stay on campus at App and study all forms of design. Shannon Knott is going, and Lori Waldrop will be the bus driver, and I would just like to inform you of that, that they will be out for the week. July 28th, we are having, that week, we are having a rocks-rock camp, and they're getting the students prepared for earth science. The Rising freshmen, that's Misty Shope, they'd like permission to go to Delonaga, Georgia, to the gold mining museum, and actually mine for gold. They're also going to do some gem mining locally. We are also having a baseball and softball camp that will study math and baseball, softball, and figure out statistics for both teams, and then they would like to go to a Braves game, figure out who they think's going to win, and then come back and see how they do. So if we could have permission, please, to go to Atlanta to a Braves game.
Do you have a date for that?
That's a date to be determined, Adam Brooks is working on that right now to see when that would fall in, so I could come back to you on the June meeting, maybe, with that date?
So you're going to Delonaga, Georgia, and Bron Delonaga goes with that?
That was a completely different camp.
Two different camps.
Okay, nine different ones, yeah, I'll have a list for you.
Yes, please.
It's pages and pages, right, of it, but there's going to be a lot of exciting things to hear of this summer. The students have had to not travel and just stay, and not many have had the advantage for the ages of themselves going into ninth and 10th grade, eighth grade, to be able to explore. Our main theme is going to be learning more about Graham County than what we have here. There's a water camp that we have planned, we'll have the Red Cross come in and do a water safety class first. They're going to fish, they're going to paddleboard, kayak, and discover things they can actually do and say in Graham County. So I'll have a list for you, but right now, I just wanted to ask about the out-of-state. I mentioned those.
Just thinking, Jen.
Any questions?
Yeah, we don't want to tag on.
Tag yours.
Yes, so we're having a summer bridge academy, and I'm just trying to say many more which have been used, but with the middle school, we'll be Rising 6 through, really Rising 9, I think we needed two students. We have a two-week camp scheduled for, it's an artisan camp, and they'll be able to be exposed to different art forms and maybe some museum visits, we'll have those best to you in June, and then the community service project for that will be a, they'll begin a mural on the side of the shopping center on the McDonald's side that we're working with the, on the property owners, and that particular group will begin a mural for that as a community service project. Mr. Matheson has some camps.
So we also will be hosting career accelerator camps at the high school, and there will be three of those camps, they'll be a week long, they're a week of June 13th through the 7th, and the first camp that we're doing is a heavy equipment construction camp, and we've got the applications out, and students are turning those in right now, and in that camp, they will be visiting local businesses, hopefully working with the DOT, I talked to Mr. Gar about that a few months ago, and there will also be a trip out of state to the shop at Phillips and Jordan in Knoxville, Tennessee, and to their offices, so that's something that, I don't have a firm date yet, but I will be trying to get that approved at the June meeting. The next camp we're going to be doing is a health careers camp, and Ms. Adams will be running that, and they're going to be visiting several areas, several area health facilities, hospitals, things like that, if COVID doesn't kick back up and they're allowed to, but they'll also go to South Western Community College, Western Carolina, AB Tech, and they want to go to the Bodies Exhibit and the CDC during that week also. And those kids will earn a CPR, first aid certification that week during that camp. And the other camp we have is a hospitality and tourism camp, and those kids will earn a food handler certification, which makes them more employable, obviously, and they're going, they're going to be working, they're going to get to do a behind-the-scenes tour of Harris Cherokee Casino, and they're going to work at Fontana Village, Topoca, hopefully and possibly another out-of-state trip for them would be to Brass Town Valley Resorts, which is there just in, outside of Hiwasi, so not too far. So we've had really good interest so far, we've got several applications back for those camps, and, you know, we're going to be able to credential some kids though during those weeks, and we're excited about it. And the heavy equipment camp, I actually have a contractor that has offered to put a bulldozer, an excavator, a dump truck on a site here in the county our kids will go to, and they're actually going to get some training as an operator, so kids are very excited about that.
Latisha.
Good morning. I want to take just a second and brag, I'm very impressed with all of that offered this morning as far as the number of camps that are being established and the opportunities that our students will have this summer. If you live in the world of mental health, I think the thing that you are always concerned about is what are our children doing in their downtime? We worry at spring break, we worry during Christmas break, we worry in the summer if those students are, you know, having the difficulties that they might be challenged with, with mental health, and to hear the level of, and the amount of work that is going in from this school system to keep students actively engaged this summer is highly impressive. That is something I think our school needs to stand back and say, we are blessed, we have amazing opportunities established for our students. And I guarantee those students that are engaged in those activities will have a much better summer than those that perhaps have too much time on their hands, so I think that that's something I wanted to point out. In the world, again, of mental health, I want to explain to you that we had the opportunity to contract with the state for what's called the COVID OPTIM program. We were allocated $200,000 for that, and we were only told initially that that would last for about six months. We weren't notified last week, but that is extended now for another year, and we have $150,000 that we can use. That's exciting for our nurses to have the support that they need in the field of COVID testing and the additional services that they need, you know, with the help with the students coming in and out of our nurses' stations, and we have security now that that program will run until June 2023. The other thing that I wanted to share with you, I mentioned this at the last meeting, we were working with partnering with Western Carolina to get an intern in the social work department. We have interviewed an individual now who is very excited about the possibility of coming to Graham County. So beginning in August, we will most likely have some additional boots on the ground with a social work intern. She's finishing her master's degree in social work, and my goal is to try to station that individual to the best of our ability, primarily at the elementary school, so when she's here building her intern hour, which we hope to be able to utilize her there as our resource. We have also had a meeting with Via Health, Mr. Moody can weigh in on some of this as well. We are working to come up with some innovative ways to tackle our mental health issues, to offer some new possibilities for how to create outside opportunities for our students when they have to be referred out for extenuating circumstances. Mr. Moody, can you think of anything that you'd like to share with that or pertaining to that?
We just know we're in struggle, we give, we want to put up the threat system in place as far as helping kids with mental health issues from what a teacher does, to the counselors, to social workers, to the son, your mental health lady, to Latisha. Sometimes, I mean, we've had several cases where kids need more, and finding help outside of school is almost impossible, would you not say? And it's been, at times, with some, and it's actually accidents, some unprofessional things have done as well, so via this sort of umbrella that I can explain, I don't know what holds.
All right, so we'll get it.
May, we'll manage it, we can try to make within it, see if we can get some of these things fixed, because again, every time you see the term news that we've got kids with mental health or suicide or stuff, we will make sure something's out there for these kids to go to once we've exhausted all our resources in our first effort, we can use Via, who unfortunately, always talk to us actually by our rooms, so that's how we got them to take. So we're going to start with them, the next step will be Appalachian services, but Ms. Wiggins is not going to stop until we find something that our kids can go to and be safe, so.
We are looking at ways to build internally. Via Health has given us some good news that there are some new opportunities that we really didn't know existed to begin building within ways from our own school system. We want to take advantage of that. We've got some really good people, we've got some very, very qualified counselors, social workers, and we're going to have to become creative in how we assist our students. And I mean this in the nicest possible way, I'm done taking no for an answer when it comes to our children. We have to be able to say that we are wrapping those supports around to our students, and I feel like a lot of times what we hear is, there's nobody available for Western North Carolina to assist in the afternoons, there's nobody that's willing to come to Graham County. We've got to have that, and so I've tried to press very hardly to say our kids are worth a lot, and that the death of a child is too high of a cost to pay for us not to be creative in the way we think about having services for children. I want to draw your attention very quickly to some data. As I promised you last month, what you're looking at is highlights from the elementary school. Last month, I shared with you Katrina's data for middle school and high school. This time, I'm sharing Amber Davis's with you. I want to share that at the bottom of your page, you're going to see that we only have 15 student days. We had spring break, we had a lot of time away, but in that amount of time, you can see the number of... But in that amount of time, you can see the number of referrals that were made. You can see the number of individual counseling sessions. You can continue to see some students are participating in risky behavior. Keep in mind, this is K through five, so you've got at least three students there that have been identified with risky behavior. Do y'all have any questions about your data that you're looking at from the elementary? Yes?
The most is about the second sheet, second injury, 27.
So that comes from your nurses' station? So without having spoken to them directly, I would probably got to think that's class one, maybe it's things that might have happened in P E, maybe on playgrounds. Can you add to that, Jamie?
Yeah, that's what it would be. Anytime that we have to contact a parent because kids are running in P E and banging heads or, you know, just anything, any kind of contact with, when we need to, you know, when they need to go to the nurse for any reason for anything that's happened at school, like tripping, skin their name, whatever, that's what those are.
So, Mr. Allison, if you look there on the second page, that's your elementary nursing information. And then if you flip onto the third page, you have your middle and high school numbers from the nurses' station. Are there any questions at all?
You can see returned to class in San Juan is a large number here. Sometimes they just wanna go to the nurse.
Yeah.
Is that great, Chris?
And so, tip is, is mental health issues. There's, I'm gonna have more days, somebody up top later.
That's why I was asking about the injury line, is kids hurt themselves at school or?
Some, some. And a lot of times, especially for your little, your little ones who maybe, you know, home environment wasn't great last night, or there was some trauma. The way that that presents at school is my head hurts, my belly hurts. So some of our nurses' visits are because of things like that.
And one of the things that I would point out is that our mental health coin tosses team, we meet monthly, we've had to slack off a little bit toward the end of, actually, it's been every two weeks. We've had to slack off toward the end of the school year because things are so busy. You can look at your schedule and see all the events that are coming. But we are trying to align ourselves very closely with, if a child does present in the nurses' station with a bellyache, does that referral need to go on to our social worker? Or does that need to go on to our counselor? And by having that group, that core group meeting frequently, we are better to align ourselves and to talk about what we need, you know, as, as common resources and how we refer out to those rough spots. Do y'all have any questions or is there anything I can clarify for you?
On that number, contacted teachers administrators on the first page, 42.
Mm-hmm.
What exactly does that number?
Yes, so that may be anytime that a teacher approaches a counselor and says, I need you to know that this child is in a classroom, they're having this experience. It also may be a time when Ms. Amber Davis would approach Mr. Naud or, you know, approach Ms. Huber and say, you know, we've got this issue that's brewing in second grade. So they're trying to keep contact numbers so that we can say that these are meaningful opportunities when administration and staff has had chances to talk to our counselors. Any other questions? I'll be glad to try to dissect some of this. If I don't know the answer, I'll ask and find it and give it to you the next time.
So I have a question in regard to that. So when you were talking to Via, is this addressing a concern that we have for students who do not qualify for Appalachian Services due to repayment or do not qualify for Medicaid? And there's no one for them to proceed counseling? Is that, is that, are they addressing that issue?
Our primary concern is that we have a face-to-face punishment.
Yes.
And there were meetings that we brought to the table, and they are trying to help us with a workable plan on how to address some of those issues. Right now, our biggest concern is that if we have a student who is contemplating suicide, who is participating in risky behaviors, sometimes the best we can do is to get them in front of a television. And that means if you've got a fifth grader, if you've got a seventh grader who's saying, I really don't want to be here tomorrow, or I'm, I'm not going to be back in school tomorrow because I really have a plan, sometimes the best thing that they have to offer is a television. And we are fighting very hard to have someone face-to-face. We've made that very plain, is that children don't respond. They, these are strangers to them and a television. And they need somebody face-to-face that can break down those mental health needs and then work collaboratively with the school system for us to have the type of contacts that we need with that student. We've talked about help in Mr. Moody. What are some of the other things that we discussed from Via? We discussed how to begin, you know, our own types of billing, as I mentioned to you earlier, but we need to grow with them. What else have you discussed with them?
Well, the biggest thing, when we have sent kids to outside sources, they're not being checked out properly and sent, sent back. And that's very dangerous because number one, you know, if a kid's got issues that we can't deal with, they need extra help, they're not giving it. Number two, our school loses credibility when we send a kid out for mental health services and they make comments like, well, just stay with the grass sod or, you know, school needs to do better doing this, without even contacting us. I mean, we've had, we've had documents falsified by these outside agencies concerning this. And if you, if you look at the news, I mean, kids are losing their lives in this surrounding county due to mental health. And it's just a matter of time if we don't get some kind of help, these kids help after hours. And that's what we went to talk to them about. We've tried for months to deal with it, they wouldn't talk with us, we're gonna have to file agreements. Like I told them the other day, we didn't hear word from them once we filed agreements. And they're just, and I tell them, our list of issues is we need help. So many examples, and I said, the kid's sick or needs help, then we sit in front of the TV and blah, blah, person. And answer your question, that has been brought up too. We've had kids turned down because they have insurance.
This is a huge, this is a huge concern that I see a lot, exceptional children, because we have a lot of students, more and more are needing mental health services and counseling services for extreme behaviors. We have got in the last nine weeks, several students moving in here with incredible high needs of behavior and safety concerns. But they do not qualify for Appalachian Services because they do not have Medicaid. So it's like, where, okay, what do we do? Where do we get the kids, these kids, the help that they need and the counseling that they need to be able to be safe at school for themselves and as well as others? And we're kinda getting that pushback, we have nothing. So we've been even trying to go through, you know, the court system to try to have that court order. And now that, that's a concern of they'll only get so many sessions and then see if they qualify for Appalachian or whatever. But I have contacted some of the other schools, and they work with their mental health providers, and they are willing to serve an additional amount of students other than just those who qualify for Medicaid. Through contracting with them or something, because we, we do have these number of students who are not getting the help they need because of not being able to afford mental health counseling. And this is a growing vastly, I mean, this growing need right now. I mean, we've, we've got kids right now that we've been sending out, brought back, can't afford or do not qualify for counseling services.
You said, Ms. Taylor, that there was kids moving in here.
Yes, we do.
Now, are they moving in with parents or are they in the system?
No, they're moving in from other counties.
Are they in the system?
Yes.
Do they not qualify for Medicaid if they're in the system?
No.
What do they like now?
That some of them have aged out, because you know, exceptional children, you can come up to the age of 22. And some of them are 18. And we've got some really high-need students who have come from group homes, institutionalized. And then, and then we've got the other students too, that were just somewhere in elementary that just really have some very concerning behavioral needs.
If they've aged out, where are they, where are they housed?
Right now, they're coming in from Murphy with a new person who was moved into our county that is, we used to work at a group home, and she is now taking students.
And that's where they live?
Mm-hmm.
That are over age?
Yes. And even the ones that have Medicaid, they're limited to the number of sessions that they get.
So, and I want, I want to just kinda let this sink in for you. My child wouldn't qualify for, for Medicaid as having the state employees Blue Cross Blue Shield insurance. Personally, if my child needed day treatment services, I could not afford out of my own private budget to pay for that cost because it is so expensive. And we have parents who are willing for their children to get this mental health service, but because they don't qualify for Medicaid, because the parents work and make too much money, they literally cannot afford to get this service for their children. But if they qualify for Medicaid for whatever reason, then they could get the service for their children. It's, it's completely unfair.
Well, until society or the government decides that mental health is, is right up there with them physically, probably even more so, it's got to be in the same category.
Well, and that was the comment that Mr. Riz left. And he said to me, and he said, Ms. Wiggins, I know the battle that you're having. And he said, if we could ever get to the point that we could recognize that the mental health needs of our children were every bit as important as the pandemic that we just came through. And if we could ever wrap around around that, we would be able to move forward.
That's right.
So I will be approaching you some this summer with some new ideas, some thoughts. We're gonna look at restructuring some of our policies. The policy that we have right now in our Safe Schools Manual needs a little bit of revision. It needs to align more closely with our mental health policy. And that policy is due to the state in September. So that's all I have, I'm sorry, I've been very lengthy, but I'm very passionate about this.
Was there any way as a board that we can engage to help? I mean, if you're listening?
Well, what's gonna have to happen, schools do so much more than just teach kids. If we're gonna do what's right and invest in our kids and help save them, this is probably one more thing that's simple, we're gonna have to take off and somehow figure out how to do it in-house. We have extra money right now, and it runs out in two more years. So I guess they think the pandemic's gonna be over then, but mental health's gonna keep going. So that's why you have all these documentation, it gives you proof that we need this year, physical, mental, whatever. So that's what we're working towards, is to have something visit in-house that hopefully could be self-supported by them billing Medicaid. Because right now, there's, there's two sets out there for those, those people that see our kids.
So, you know, what you can do as a board is, you know, advocate to your legislators. Because really, it's gonna have to be some changes that come down through state government.
It's great. I mean, like, state government, government has to get on board.
There has never been a higher need than what there is right now. Never, never.
There is, and there is, nobody could have written this narrative that has happened the last four years. That could have knocked this up for a storyline.
Well, I'd like to echo what Ms. Wiggins said about the data. I, I explained to counselors, nurses, and social workers, this, what you do is important. It is vital for our students, and we need to publish it. It needs to be in your hands. It needs to be able to go out into the future of whatever grants are available to say, this is what's happening in Graham County. And we've kept solid data now since, I believe, October, September or October. And so when I proceed with it, please note that there's a lot of work going behind all of that data.
Thank you, Ms. Wiggins. Ms. Waldrook, do you have anything for us?
I'll be short and sweet.
I'm sorry.
No, it's, no, you're good, you're good. Technology's going real good. We're getting the teacher computers have started coming in, so we're working on those. Getting those inventoried and set up and out to the teachers. Just extremely busy. And like I said, it's going good, staying busy.
Thank you. 2022, 23 handbooks. I didn't skip you, Ms. Wiggins, Mr. Moody. I know you're on the agenda, so.
Let her in.
Excuse me?
Let her in.
Yes. 2022, 23 school handbooks. I guess principals are gonna take care of that.
You go first?
You go right ahead.
I'm gonna come up to the podium so I can flip pages.
Be careful, spread.
Okay, so there are a few changes in the handbook from last year. And I think those will probably highlight maybe in the copies that you got. I'm sure that were. Okay.
The copies that you've worked out today.
Today, they're highlighted.
Oh. So there may be one or two changes even after that that we've made. The first one is on page seven of the high school handbook. And that's just where we've added the information about the early clinic, about the page seven. On page eight, we have also put in a statement about, basically it's a mental health statement about suicidal, self-destructive behavior or perceived threat to others. We were asked to add that. On page 11, there are a couple of changes there that we have made. The first one is under tardies early dismissal. And it just reiterates that students that are checking out of the school must be granted parental permission in the office prior to checking out on the office computer. We run into a situation where, you know, we've had kids walk in, sit down, sign out and leave, and no parents ever call them and dismiss them. And so we just wanted to clarify that. Also, we've added a statement under the lunch break section that being in the student parking lot without permission from an administrator during break or lunch is prohibited. We have to chase kids down out of the parking lot and we'll go out there and hang out, and that's usually not a good thing. On page four and five, or on the, on page 16 and 17, we have made a drastic change to our dress code policy. We have been using the credit card for several years. And during that time, we have had to update, make other, make it basically more lenient various times. And so we have changed this policy now to where it just talks about students must be modestly and decently dressed. And that would be at the discretion of a teacher if they choose to send a kid to the office or the administration at the high school. And, you know, the students should not be wearing clothing that's unsafe and decent. Some of this we borrowed from some other school systems, basically. But there was a lot of discussion between myself and Ms. Sawyer about this. It has become a, I mean, it's just a battle. And you can't get to all the kids that will break up the dress code every day, just to be honest with you. In our previous dress code, they couldn't have holes in their hands above the knees and different things like that, which, you know, every day, 15, 20 kids in the high school were wearing holy blue jeans. So rather than fight the battle, we have just decided, you know, that we are gonna just be a little bit more lenient in the dress code. And it will be, as long as it's not interfering with the school instruction or causing a disruption in the classroom, basically, that is what it says. And also, at the end, there is a statement there that they cannot have logos or symbols which refer to or promote tobacco, drugs, alcohol, violent, violence, gangs, lewd conduct or anything of offensive nature. So, so we would like a little ability to change the dress code policy. On page 18, we have added a disciplinary measure, which is after-school detention. That will kinda help us hopefully with our ISS numbers. And we've never had that before, but now we are able to do that. And on page 19, at the top, we've added a sentence there where if a student is disruptive, any inappropriate student behavior during ISS, if they're, again, if they're disruptive while they're in in-school suspension or after-school or something like that, then we can add additional days. That was never in there, we've always done that, but we wanted to put that in writing. On page 21, that's where some of the offenses actually are, the class four A offenses. And we've added after-school detention there to go along with in-school suspension, when it says and/or combination. On 22, page 22, we have added the violation of the technology acceptable use policy we have granted to several instances this year where students are on inappropriate websites, in chats with people that, you know, we don't have a clue who they are. And y'all know that we just had the FBI down to the school last week to present on this. It's never been clearly stated in the handbook, so now we have clearly stated that. And we have also added in there that in addition to in-school suspension or something like that, that a student could lose their ability to have a school device and be on the internet at the high school. And we have got a couple of students that are, basically they're on strike three right now. They're one strike away from losing that privilege because of the sites that they've been on. And I will say that we do have GoGuard in the classroom and has helped some so teachers can view what's on the students' Chromebooks while they're in the class. And that, that has helped somewhat. On page 26, under graduation requirements, we have added there that students must take one entry-level C T E class that leads to a pathway completion. And that will be also in a board policy that Ms. Davis. And that will be also in a board policy that Ms. Davis presents to y'all with her graduation requirements today. And also that all student debt responsibilities must be cleared prior to participating in graduation ceremonies. That's always been our policy. However, it's never really been kept writing. We've never had to enforce it. Everyone's always taking care of that. But we wanted to add that in writing to our curriculum.
And let me remind the new board members, debt is cumulative. So if there's debt that starts in third grade, it carries with them to seniors.
Especially cafeteria debt. And generally, the only lot of debt in the high school is, it could be from the middle school, it's in the media center. But most of it is in the high school office. And that brings me to the last thing on page twenty-eight. We've also added a statement here where each year our students are asked to participate in a fundraiser for their class. It's apparent that all the kids participate in this fundraiser because that money is set aside and used for graduation and prom and different things throughout their time in high school. So they have a fundraiser as a freshman, a sophomore, a junior, and a senior. And for several years now, if the student refused to participate in the fundraiser, then they have to pay twenty dollars. They could do that whether they participate in the front fundraiser or it would be added to their senior debt. And we have put that in writing that if you do not participate, twenty dollars will be added to your senior debt. And that will have to be paid before your class, before you can graduate with your class, basically. And are there any other questions about the handbook?
Mr. Madison, you said on page twenty-six, you were going to revise that.
Yes, I did do that. We did take out, there were a couple of places in there where it talked about senior project being a requirement. We have removed those also because, as I talked to the board last month, we were talking about requiring senior project anywhere. And Ms. Knott also asked me yesterday about what classes are required for graduation and things like that. So we have posted something, we may post something on our guidance page that will allow parents to look at that. But basically, in order to graduate from high school, what the state says that you have to have is you have to have four maths, four Englishes, four social studies, three science classes. And then if you're going to a university, you have to have a foreign language, two semesters of foreign language. If you're on a CTE pathway, you have to be a pathway completer in CTE. And then there are various electives that you can take. And the board, our local policy as a student has to have twenty-eight credits to graduate. But we also offer a twenty-two credit deployment. That is discussed in our handbook also. And that's for kids that are assigned to the academy and have some kind of underlying issue, whether it be attendance, they fall behind in their class, or things like that. We can offer a twenty-two credit deployment.
Well, I appreciate you putting that on the, on the counseling, but I think we also may have a policy for graduation, which I would refer parents to. But I made questions on that before.
And Ms. Walsh actually brought us a document this morning from Platte County. And I'm going to talk with Godot's office about the possibility of getting it, something like that for our school. But it basically is the different pathways. And in the back of it, there's like a four-year plan. And I can see it being very handy for our school. So she actually shared that with us today, and that may be something that we add. It will list like the tri-county opportunities and different things like that, too.
Do you want to talk a little bit about the pathway? We're hoping to open up some new.
Okay, so we have got some new pathways. And I may have mentioned this in the last board meeting. I don't know. Okay, so we have added drone technology. Mr. Dale Wiggins will be teaching that. I've had very good signups for that class already as we've done registration. We have posted last week for an agriculture position. Our plan is to offer animal science and horticulture. And we have also had really good interest in those classes. And we're offering teaching as a profession, which we are very excited about because that will give us a tool to begin to recruit our young people to come back to Grand County schools and be a teacher. And students that complete teaching as a profession can earn six credit hours at, through the university system in the teaching area, in the teaching degree in North Carolina. So that's really good. And we've also changed, the majority of our computers classes in the past have been Microsoft Word, PowerPoint. We are switching from that to Adobe Academy, which that will give us a way for students to complete a pathway through Adobe one and two. And it's a whole lot of like Photoshop type stuff and things like that, digital, visual media, things like that. So maybe if the kids want to go into visual design and stuff like that. So we're excited about the changes we're making in CTE. I think they're going to be very beneficial for our kids and overall for our community. Any questions? Thank you.
Ms. Walsh?
One of the changes we made at the middle school were basically just, I was very wordy in the past, and we just reworded some things to make it a little less wordy. So on page three, we just added a statement that explains it in the paragraph before that, but just said that students and parents are aware that students must be in participation in school to participate in after-school activities, sporting events, dances, clubs, those things. They have to be in school at least half a day or have an excuse. So we added that. On page four, we just cleaned up our definitions. We had, in our old handbook, we had almost a paragraph for each one of the definitions. So we just cleaned that up a little bit. So no changes except just changing the verbage a little bit. On page five, I added just a statement there. The way that it read before was a little misleading because it just said that a doctor's verification would make them eligible for medically fragile. And it's a little bit more detailed than that. So I added that, that it's where it said that they may qualify. Because it's not as simple as just a doctor's statement. On page six, we added just a statement about our after-school program. And at the bottom there that's highlighted, we have, we're working on our schedule right now, but just lessons learned this year with moving the sixth grade over. We're trying to figure out our schedule where we can have two lunches and separate the sixth grade from the seventh and eighth grade. So, and that would just cause, you know, a shortened lunch for the other kids. But that's kind of what we're working on. So we've not got that figured out yet. On page ten, we also, like the high school, added the statement about the earlier health clinic and also a statement about our suicidal, self-destructive behavior. A little statement about that. Page thirteen, we had vandalism there. We just added the bathrooms to that. We've had some issues in the bathrooms this year. And for whatever reason, the bathrooms were not included in the, in the past. Over on page seventeen, we cleaned up the referrals to the academy and put that the principal may refer a student to the academy when alternative learning program or environment may be beneficial to the student or at times when a student's behavior is disruptive to the mainstream environment. So we just added that statement. On our, at the bottom of the page, our role as a middle school discipline procedure. We have, the only thing that we have changed in there is that we have also added after-school detention as part of our discipline plan. We're going to be able to do that through 21st century, hopefully. But the kids will be getting some character education and some, that's kind of what will be happening during the after-school, kids are assigned after-school detention. And on page twenty, we added the student appeals. That was just updated a little bit, I think with changing Kevin Watts name in there. And Ms. Sawyer sent me that from the high school. So I think she had worked with Ellen, and maybe there was some other changes in that. But we just replaced it with what she was given. And on page twenty-three, we left the statement in there that said visitors may be limited due to health-related restrictions. We just weren't sure what that was going to look like next year. Hopefully that will not be the case. At the bottom of the page, which did not get highlighted, and then I saw some mistakes written over it because we added that at the end. We also changed our dress code policy to go along with what high school's doing. We're having the same issues that Mr. Matteson's having. And we just find that it's easier if we can both be on the same page since we're in the same building. So we changed that. The other thing which I did not add to mind that I'll mention, that I'm going to go back, I'm going to go back and add, is I'd like to also add the technology statement that the high school added because we have those same issues. So that is not in there. And I think that's probably all of our changes. I think that's it. Any questions?
Ms. Stewart?
So with the elementary handbook, on the very first page is where we added the information about the school-based health centers so parents could have the numbers and any of that information right there on the first page of the handbook. If you look on page nine, under class one offenses, it was alcohol, drugs, and weapons offenses. And we noticed that in previous years, we referenced weapons there, but we didn't have a specific breakout part. We have possession, use, sale, and distribution of drugs. There was nothing for actual weapons. And so we added the weapons section there to that class one offense since it was referenced at the top, but then there was nothing else under there. In class two offenses is where we added the statement with Mr. Moody, inappropriate use of technology to view sexualized content. It is a problem at the elementary school also. So just want the board to be aware of that. And we added fleeing campus, skipping school. We needed to add that this year as well because we had a great attempt. And then we had to try to figure out where it fit in our class offenses. So we added it there. On page ten, under the class four offenses, we separated vaping out into its own little category because that's been a big issue, especially this year for our fifth graders. We have had third graders with vapes. So just, we had to address that with its own bullet point there. On page twelve, we added the statement. We've always had the statement about the board policy related to self-harming threats, but we wanted to be consistent with the other schools in adding the suicidal, self-destructive behavior and perceived threat to others clause in our handbook. On page nineteen, at the bottom of the one, two, three, fourth paragraph down with child nutrition program, I just wanted to notice the very last sentence. It says, prices for meals and snacks at RAS during the 2022, 2023 school year are yet to be determined. That's because when we were getting the handbooks ready for this meeting, we didn't have that information from Ms. Moody yet. So just know that once we get back, that will be an area that we request, even though the board's approving this, that we go back and add in those specific charges. And on page twenty-one, because of a policy that the board has adopted, we needed a blurb in our handbook for the standards for defining directory information or what we consider directory information. And so that blurb is there on page twenty-one. So not a whole lot of changes to the RAS handbook, but do y'all have any questions? And I want to clarify, at the elementary school, every single year, it never fails that we have some little boys or little girls that for their birthday or for Christmas give that new pocket knife. And they are so proud of it that they just have to show their friends. And they bring it to school. And they're, they're just so proud that they're showing their friends. We don't consider that possession of a weapon or anything like that because that child's not, their intent is not to use that as a weapon. We confiscate that. We call the parents. The parents come pick it up in the office. We have a conversation with the child. I know you're super proud of your new pocket knife, but you can't bring it to school. Now, if they're persistent with it, that rises into a new level. But I did want you to know that we do use some common sense discretion with that. Little boys and their Swiss Army knives, I mean, they are so proud. So we use that with discretion. But when we're talking about possession of weapons or weapons, we're talking about when the student's being clear with their intent for what they're going to do with that.
Hey, Nancy, I found parity.
Yeah, and I mean, we don't encourage it and we address it. But when we're talking about weapons, especially at the elementary school, I did want you to know that those other situations come up and we handle those with discretion. Thank you.
Which is good.
Yeah, and I would like to mention with the handbooks that more than likely with the elementary and the middle school handbooks, these will be online and available for families. We just find that really truly, once they send them home at the beginning of the year, they're just, they probably light fires with them or we fill the landfill with them. We want them to be available for families. So there will be paper copies available. If anybody wants to pick one up in the office at the middle and the elementary school, we'll continue to have a printed copy at the high school because it's part of their, is a part of their, the structure where they have their classes and their handbook. So it will look a little differently, but there will be printed copies available. For anybody that wants one, we want them out just as often as they want. And it will not be a problem to access those.
Well, it gives us a great resource when parents contact us and be looking at the handbooks. Good resource.
Can I add something to? We did not change our cell phone policy. We had much discussion about it. Cell phones are such a distraction to education and what's going on in the classroom. But we, my staff and Mr. Dunn's and I really would like to say no cell phones, but we know that that's, we would still be fighting that, they would be sneaking. But, you know, just want to make you aware that cell phones are a major problem. They're a major issue.
In the high school also.
Are you just bullying the issues and posting things on social media and things like that?
Well, it's just a distraction to education in the elementary. Kids are more concerned about cell phones than what's going on in the classroom.
I have kindergartners with cell phones. I don't understand why, but we. Well, I had asked Mr. Moody, because I do know some schools have just shut down. But you can't do access the internet. Now, it's my understanding, I don't know, and then Mr. Moody said, well, there you have your teachers. And that's true. But can you still not text and make phone calls if you have no internet?
You know how cellular lock? Yeah, they're going to stop it through the internet if it deals with the.
Does it, but I know there's schools that are doing that.
You keep picking choose or you block.
No, you can't, no.
But can you not still use your, can you not still call and text? Can you not even call?
All of that do a locker.
If you don't walk around, nobody can. And then it's a safety issue. It's weird how it works. Look at the data, it goes over the whole.
It's terrible. It is terrible.
And it just blocks all data coming in and out, except where you're at. Of course, you're getting into blocks of money there, too.
I started to say that.
So, I mean, that blocks, that blocks our ability to use our cell phones in case of an emergency. You know, so. And they don't need their cell phones anymore. I know the argument used that they needed it because of using in class and education and all that. They all have school devices now. They do not need a cell phone. I mean.
I mean, we had an incident last week where the kids were airdropping an inappropriate picture in the cafeteria. And if you don't know where it's coming from, anybody that's got an iPhone, it could come from anybody.
One phone on my phone.
Yeah, exactly. Because you've got your airdrop on. Airdropping him.
An appropriate picture.
And that's something that.
There also is consistency amongst that.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you very much.
And that, and that is a, a, a lesson.
We have one board member that needs to leave at twelve, and I'd like to get through this. All right, now, field trips only give us the ones that need to be approved. Excuse me?
The month of May.
For the month of May. Okay? All right, do we have?
Do we have to vote on our handbook?
Yes, I, we do. Thank you. It's all right. Do I have a motion to approve the handbooks as presented by our principals? Do I have a second? All in favor, any opposed? All right, now, do we have any field trips for Matt?
I've got one.
Mr. Matt?
Okay, so I have a field trip that will be on May the 25th to the Titanic Museum in Pigeon Forge. That will be only for students that are part of the history classes that have completed there. their, uh, finals by the 25th. They would be eligible to go. Uh, Ms. Keener will be the one that will be taking them. And, uh, they'll be leaving at eight o'clock, returning at five. And this does go along with part of their curriculum, so.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve this field trip, uh, to the Titanic Museum on May 25th to Pigeon Forge? Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. All right, Mr. Green, budget amendments.
Uh, excuse me, I just have the one that, permission to change the one that was approved last month that we will be going on May 25th instead of going to Six Flags to go to Dollarwood.
Yes, okay. Do I have a motion to approve them changing going to Six Flags in Atlanta to going to Dollarwood and Pigeon Forge?
Followed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Any opposed? Okay, now word from our sponsor.
What are we saying?
No, I just like to say.
Yes. Okay, for the, uh.
I'm in the back, but you can move it back.
No, no, I, I, I'm fine, honey.
Okay.
If this is okay for you.
I can see.
It's fine.
Okay, all right. Here he is. Uh, there are four pages of budget amendments. Um, the first three pages are budget amendments to the state public school fund. The first two pages involve budget amendments, uh, for what we call coronavirus relief funds. It's PRCs 121 through 137. I'm not going to go over these individually. Uh, these funds were allotted to us late last fiscal year and were allowed to be carried over and used for the first half of this fiscal year. The liquidation date of those funds was 12/30/2021. So these budget amendments simply take those budgeted expenditures that are on our state budget and remove them from our state budget. If you can scan through those, if you've got a question about any of those. An example would be on the first page is if you look at the bottom budget amendment. This is PRC 125, school nutrition. Uh, up until 12/30/2021, we've spent all of that allotment except for $4. So the remainder of that allotment needs to be removed from our state budget. And that's the same for all the, uh, budget amendments on the first two pages. And these are the state public school fund. Get a chance to look through those. No questions? Let's look at the third page of the budget amendments for the state public school fund. Uh, the first section there, this is PRC 15, uh, school technology fund. We received an additional $8, trying to use that for supplies and materials. The next section down is PRC 32, exceptional children. Uh, this is a budget amendment that goes back to the initial, uh, uh, budget that the legislature, uh, adopted back in November. This is the last one, um, to present as a result of that budget being enacted. Then, uh, we received an additional $54,990. Those funds were, uh, similar to a lot of the revisions, uh, as a result of that budget being enacted, uh, to allow for the increase in salary and benefits. Now, on this budget amendment here, you see that I've got, I've spread that out over several other line items. Uh, we've got, uh, some assistant salary there, instructional supplies, uh, and some contract services. Next section down is PRC 30, uh, state textbooks. Uh, this is a reallocation of, of revenue. The, uh, state textbooks, this is a result of an ABC transfer that I made. I'm taking $45,000 out of tech, uh, state textbooks, which is the traditional warehouse, and moving that $45,000 into the, uh, state public school fund where those, uh, non-digital, digital textbooks, uh, PRC 131. So that revenue is going to be used for those types of expenditures. And the last page, this is a budget amendment to Fund Eight. This is for Gear Up. Uh, we had a meeting several weeks ago, uh, with two representatives from, uh, App State, Francine and myself, and we made, uh, budget, budget revision, uh, that, that all of us, uh, conferred on and we needed to move, uh, supplies and materials, $10,000 out of that because it was needed more for workshop expense. So it's just a reallocation of budget expenditures, no change in revenue. Any questions about the budget amendments?
You're going to E now, fiscal year '23, local.
Yes. Uh, each year we have to adopt, uh, our local budget. Uh, we need to present that, uh, in the next couple, three weeks, uh, to the county commissioners. Uh, as you know, the part of, this part of our local current expense fund, uh, is the funding we receive from the county and that's a million dollars. And I've developed this budget at that amount, a million dollars. Uh, I'll go through, uh, each, uh, PRC within that funding. Uh, just the total for each PRC, just so, uh, folks, uh, that are present will see what those levels are. First section there is transportation. Uh, total there is $75,000. Majority of that's for vehicle liability insurance and fuel and gasoline. Next section down is, uh, PRC 801, that's regular instruction. Majority of that is for coaching supplements, the band supplement. Um, and, uh, you'll see there, this is really a cost that is wrong on us. The retirement matching now is 24.1%. So for gross wages that we pay for a full-time employee, we have to take out of our allotment an additional amount of 24.1% and send that to the retirement system. So that's one of the costs that's really hurting us, uh, across the board. The state on their allotments may, uh, make a concession for that or increase their allotments. But when it comes to federal funds and local funds, uh, there's no increase in our allotments to cover that expenditure. So that's, I just wanted to make that point. Uh, we had a meeting last Wednesday and that was one of the, uh, with, uh, principals and some of our directors and that was, that was the point that I wanted to make. That's, that, that's, that's a big cost to our school system. When several years ago, 10, 15 years ago, that cost used to be six and a half percent. Now it's 24.10. Uh, next section down is Board of Education. Uh, total allotment there is 22,000. Uh, next page is Central Office. Total allotment for that is 165,000. Uh, the two biggest, uh, costs there would be the audit for 34,000 and then we have software maintenance, uh, agreements that we have renew each year and that's $20,000. Uh, next is the principal's office. Uh, there's $20,000 for that allotment. Um, we have some supplements we pay out of that, supplies and materials, etc. Next section down is Operation Plant. This is the biggest portion, uh, of our local, uh, current expense fund within the county funding. That's $362,000. Um, that covers electric well. It helps with these line items. Electricity, propane, water, telephones, property expense, uh, property insurance, uh, supply of materials and fuel. Um, that 362 does not cover those expenses. Uh, it helps. A lot of those expenses have to be taken out of other levels of funds, particularly impact aid. Next page, uh, here's the allotment for maintenance, 160,000. Uh, we've got 40,000, uh, approximately, 56,000 there, 58,000 for, uh, maintenance, uh, salaries and matching benefits. And then we have contracted services and supplies and materials. And then the next section down, uh, other benefits, this would be workers compen, uh, workers compensation, unemployment insurance and life insurance and total there is 38,000. Those individual PRCs, I mentioned the totals for each one. That adds up to a million dollars that we traditionally get from the county. Now, there are other portions of our local budget, uh, that I'd like to go over on the next page. Uh, section areas fines and forfeitures is PRC 834. Those are funds that we receive from the, uh, clerk of superior court. That's $20,000 and we use that, uh, uh, for workshop expense, uniforms and, uh, safety and security supplies, uh, for our safety department. School safety. Uh, next is forest service receipts. I always budget that quite low at 40,000. Uh, we typically won't know what that allotment is until the last two months of fiscal year. So I like, I always try to budget that low just in case the allotment that we typically get, uh, isn't as high. Last year we received 127,000. It's not a double on a budget that high, I did. But those, uh, uh, those forest service receipts help with electricity, propane, uh, maintenance of janitor supply, fuel, etc. Okay, those are, those are all the PRCs within our local current expense fund, which is Fund Two. Uh, the next page, uh, this is a budget here for Impact Aid. That's part of our Fund Eight where we account for our grants. Uh, this budget hasn't changed very much. Uh, the total there for Impact Aid is 600,000. You can scan through those items there. No need to go over that individually. So the total for Fund Two, which is local current expense fund and, uh, Fund Eight with Impact Aid only is 1,660,000. And as you can see on the last page, there's a budget review which matches up uh, with those budget expenditures, 1,660,000.
On page two, Mr. Green, under Principal's Office, PRC 812, why do you have an Assistant Principal zero? Why would you just, why would you just have a zero? Why is it even there?
It shouldn't be there. We've copied and pasted that, this, uh, this budget for several years. And that Assistant Principal, uh, allotment there is funded in another PRC.
Is what?
Funded from another, from a reporting code. I'll take that out when I go back to my.
Well, I was just.
Yes.
I mean, I was.
I'm glad you got that. Well, the last page of these documents is going to be the capital outlay projects. And these are capital outlay needs. Let you scan through those. The total for, uh, elementary, and we do have some funding out of the state budget that came down this year. Uh, this is going to help with these, but it's not going to fund all of our needs. Uh, as you know, we, uh, we don't get a significant amount of capital outlay funding from the county. Uh, they have helped us in other ways. I'll have to report with them. I think we're going to have a discussion after this is over, um, about that issue. But, uh, the total, uh, capital outlay needs for Robinville Elementary is 184,000. For Robinville Middle School and High Schools, 90,500. And then Graham County Schools, uh, uh, the district is 95,000. So the capital needs that we've identified for next year, uh, is 369,500.
And just for the benefit of the audience, the additional for the elementary school is our playground equipment is all exhausted. And it's at the point that it is really, possibly being dangerous. So before we get absolutely to that point, we need to have a serious conversation about replacing $100,000 at least for playground equipment for children.
Listen, have we heard anything about the. Talking to the.
I don't believe we got it. And we, we knew that it would be, because we have one outstanding grant in that category anyway, the middle school construction, we knew that we'd be a little lower on the list, but, uh, we're just going to keep putting that in over here.
Any discussion about that, uh, that million dollars that I've got in budget currently?
So, Mr. Green, what, what's our shortfall? Because I want it to be very noted that, that we do have a lot of money right now as every government entity does, um, with extra funding. That's our COVID money that we talk about. Um, it is coming in in various ways, but it's all very targeted for COVID relief, for, uh, you know, making up missed opportunities for children. Uh, and it's also one of those things that, that they're going to give them and they're going to, it's going to stop. Uh, very, really for us, I'll make a penny move because we know this is top 2024. And we've been able to do some wonderful things with that, but it's not helped anywhere with the bottom line with all of our, our typical current expenses. So I think there is a discussion that, you know, we've, we've been at this rate of a million dollars from the local budget for how long, Mr. Green?
Uh, three to five years. I'd have to look back. Um, now, I was grateful when they increased that several years ago on two to three occasions. Uh, but it's been, uh, at that level for the last three to five years.
They told you about that.
And, and we have, um, you know, but we are to the point that, like Mr. Green said, our matching benefit rate has been tremendous and that is not anything we can compensate from, from anywhere else. Uh, so I think the board is at the position of looking at, um, do we make and ask for more in order to compensate the shortfall that we're seeing and other, from other.
Let me give, uh, more support too, as far as your, as far as the need from, from local. Uh, when the state had this budget, which was a very generous budget and I'm happy with it, when they make a mandate for salary increases and matching benefits, that's across the board. Okay? The state may increase their allotments, but the federal government, the federal allotments we receive, their allotments are not, uh, increased equally with those mandated, uh, costs, uh, for salary benefits. And it's the same with child nutrition or anybody that's paid out of local. Um, you know, those, those salary increases are mandated. So you've got less funds available in federal and local, um, because of those increased costs and sal, and, uh, uh, salary increase to matching benefits. So you have less money in local. When you run out of funds in state, what are you going to do? You have to move them over local when you run, when you expend your funds in federal. You have to move these expenditures over to local because if you try to expend more state or federal funds than you've got, then Department of Public Construction will send me a report and say, you've got an allotment overdraft. And if you don't refund that out of local, we're going to start charging you interest. So these costs are going, getting greater because of that budget and other reasons. We're having less funds available to cover those costs. Uh, the two, the two biggest sources of funding we have in local is the million that we get from the county, the 600,000 that we get from Impact Aid and the 127 that we got last year from timber seats. Now, once those funds are, uh, expended state, federal, and those costs go over into, uh, local, uh, hey, once we expend those funds that we've received on a yearly basis, if it's greater than those revenues, then we have to dip into fund balance and you know.
And would you share the percentage of what our fund balance is?
Oh, it's less than 1%. I don't have, I don't have to calculate that.
Does the state mandate a certain percent?
Not for the school systems.
Okay.
You know, the counties are mandated to keep an 8%. I think that's correct, an 8% fund balance. Yeah.
Mr. Green, um, if you'll refresh my memory, when you had that audit that you're.
Mr. Green, if you'll refresh my memory, when you had that audit that you're having every year with the White and whatever their names are.
Anderson, Smith, and White.
And he presented to the board, if I'm remembering correctly, an increase in local allotment was one of his suggestions to the board, was that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, Mr. Green, would it help? I mean, I know we make this request, but does someone actually physically go to the county commissioners and let them hear what you have just told us? Or even our auditor come and get on the agenda?
The, we can request a meeting with them before we present our request to them.
I think we should. They need to hear this.
I've got a figure in mind that I'm not going to speak about that right now until we have, if we have a conversation with our board and their board. It's just, we're getting to a point right now where that allotment, I mean, even though I'm grateful, we're getting that amount, it's just not enough.
And, Mr. Green, has this not happened in the past, that we do this, that we get together?
Yeah, several years ago, well, several years ago, and we were in mediation with the county, and I'm pleased to say that, you know, things looked up and we worked well together, and, you know, they've done their part. We're just to the point, and I'm sure every department that they have, also to the point that what we're asking for is just not enough to cover the bare necessities.
All those costs are increasing, salary benefits, operational expenditures, electricity, propane, water, and even your insurance coverage is going up every year or so for that. That really hurts us, that allotment's not going up a certain percentage every year to help cover those increases.
What is the timeline, Mr. Green? I mean, we've got to submit.
We have, I think we have to submit that to May fifteenth, that request, I think that's correct.
To the county.
To the county, yes.
And then they have to make a decision by?
They have to make a decision, they have to adopt their budget no later than June thirtieth. Of course, they're, they've been successful at doing that before June thirtieth, they're close to it, so.
I think they need to.
So would you recommend to the board right now that we increase the ask at this point, because you've got to turn this in before they have another board meeting?
Yes.
And then if there is, then it will be a need to maybe have a joint meeting with the board commissioners?
I can go back and increase, you know, this one million dollar budget for whatever we think is appropriate, and then if we need to meet beforehand or present it as is, whatever that increase is, we can get that to them by May fifteenth.
They need to know what's going on in their head while they're not making it to us. So we're going to have to ask them.
And what percent, we're not going to make it.
That's true.
Do you know what their fund balance is? Their fund balance, I've been told, was approximately forty-six percent of their operating budget. Now, what it is exactly, I assume that it's close to what it's been historically the last couple of years, around fifteen million. So forty-six percent of that's a pretty healthy fund balance. And you've got to give them credit for building that. You know, they weren't in a situation like that ten years ago, so they've done a good job, their team's done a good job, you know, turning their finances around. You know, we've used our fund balance like they asked us to do, and we're at the point now where we basically have, you know, very little fund balance. We may be, with this upcoming audit, if we use fund balance that we don't have, we will get a letter from the local government commission when our audit's submitted to them, and we don't want that to happen.
Well, I think that we're at the point that there is no choice but to increase our request to the local government. I think it would be, what, I mean, the board may discuss what that amount is, you've got to send something to the local government.
I do.
Something that was a million, we didn't make off the meeting, correct?
We did, we ran the ports and had a meeting last Wednesday, that million dollars has already been expended, and we've got two months left.
And I'll tell you, we have pulled everything absolutely legally possible from any kind of COVID funds, but again, I want to be clear, we've got a lot of that money, but it is very clearly earmarked for specific tasks. We can't pay things that are on this sheet with that money, and we're very closely monitored by that by the state.
Let me ask you something, and I know, we, back last year, November, whatever, we gave a thousand dollar retention bonus, correct? And that next five hundred's going to be paid out.
Well, that's all going to be able to come out of COVID money.
And that's COVID money, that was COVID money, okay? And that was, okay.
Or state money.
In other words?
It was not local, it was, there was some state and some COVID money.
Those are state and federal mandates, paid from specific parts of money, and we have no discretion on how to spend those funds.
Okay, let's say, at the time, though, we didn't know how many people were going to be retiring, we may not have anybody retired, but that money was allotted to give five hundred dollars to everybody that was.
Yes, I know what you're going with that, so is there extra money there?
That, what's going to happen, that money?
Well, so there'll be a few thousand dollars, but we had to pull that money from the budget. It had to come from somewhere to start with, it wasn't originally allotted to go to retention bonuses, that was a choice that the board made to go with that, so we pulled that from other line items like supplies and materials. Workshop.
Ester money.
It is, but it was pulled, it was already to start with, when Ester was first come out, it went in supplies and materials, workshop expenses, those kind of things, so we pulled from those line items to do retention bonuses, all within that same Ester money, so.
Why did we make them retention, who made them retention bonuses?
That's the only choice you had.
Oh, that was the only choice?
That's the only choice you had out of that pot of money.
You had to make them.
Yes, yes.
So in other words, if we don't have anybody to retire, then we don't, so in other words, that money makes no difference.
And that money does not contribute to anything we're talking about in this conversation?
How much do we need?
Well, I'll tell you a discussion that I had with our payroll person, Nikki Gibbs, last week, when I was looking at the folks that we pay from PRC nineteen, which is in state, that's small school supplemental funding, all right? We traditionally pay about thirty-five to thirty-seven individuals out of that pot of funding, state funding. Eighteen of those are classroom teachers, so we're not going to move them out of that allotment, okay? We have other individuals in there, like our maintenance staff, custodial staff, and we have some school secretaries that we've had to move out of that pot of funding because it didn't increase. It's one million eight hundred and twenty thousand, and it's been that way for eight to ten years. The state's not recognizing that we have salary benefits in there, they need, we've already, we spoke with Kevin Corbin about this before the pandemic hit, and that kind of got put on the back burner. That needs to, that needs to be increased incrementally, just like the other program reporting codes within the state budget. But to get to my point, I told our payroll manager, Ms. Gibbs, that if we kept everybody that we traditionally paid out of PRC nineteen, if we kept them in there, right now, we'd need another four hundred thousand dollars just to pay those folks in PRC nineteen.
So essentially, you're saying where is four hundred thousand dollars for?
I mean, that's a big increase, but look at the fact that it hasn't been increased in, you know, three to five years.
Plus the back of the matching.
It was seven hundred and forty thousand the whole time I've been on the board, until about three years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but the retirement stuff had not just gone.
No, that, right, that retirement matching has increased incrementally every year since I started working here in two thousand and five, one, two, three percent every year.
That adds up.
It does, I mean, it takes, if you've got, I mean, you can do the math, if we have an eight million dollar payroll that's subject to retirement, we have to take another twenty-four point ten percent of that eight million dollars and send it to the retirement system, and that comes out of our allotments.
Remember, I'm wrong too, Mr. Green, but we're paying some salaries out of Ester funds now too, correct?
That's right.
And so, with those Ester funds in, you're talking about a cliff, and sending people home is going to be our option if something doesn't change.
Yeah, of course, that's a three-year, three-year grant, correct?
The Ester, the Ester two funds in twenty-twenty-three and the Ester three funds in twenty-twenty-four.
So the way that we put salaries in there, we pay first-year salaries out of one of the grants, and then second, third-year salaries out of the grant that was last in August, so that we have some sustainability.
I know what they're, one of their questions is going to be, what if we make cuts? That's one of their questions.
One more thing, too, that I have to pick out a term, but, so, we're assuming that they really need extra money too, while we're thinking about this for the middle school wing, because it's going to go over budget, Ms. Washes makes some changes to save money for that, for furniture, when we started this project, it was two hundred and thirty dollars a square foot, it's now approaching two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot.
And the state has already.
Already won.
Increased our allotment for that.
And I know the county has matched, but technically the county matched the five hundred, so they're not on anyone. So that's, you'll maybe consider two would make this request, so.
We've got anyone here.
So is the request finished out until June?
No, the request is for next year.
Next year, starting July one, and going through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three.
So what would you say we need to request? A million one? Million four, million five?
Sounds to me like we need to ask for an extra million, because you said that PRC nineteen was four hundred thousand.
Yeah, they.
Well, I mean, we got to ask.
I've had to move, I've had to move approximately four hundred thousand dollars of salary benefits out of PRC nineteen, just so we don't overspend on that allotment. You know, if the state can keep up, if they would increase that incrementally like they do the other PRCs for salary benefits, it would be less of a request or less of a need from the county.
And we will pursue that with state legislators, we will, that can be on our agenda for advocacy for that.
What's the election year, so?
Well, I think we will be negligent if we didn't ask for an increase in our local budget.
Absolutely.
And I think, I just said the question, you're going to hear from the local government commission anyway, that fund balance of one percent or less, I mean, asking to spend your fund balance, you will hear from the local government commission anyway, and you're not remiss, you're not being flagrant, you just didn't get the money from the county. So, I do think that's an issue that needs to be addressed as well, the fund balance.
Does anybody know more rent out of state as far as funding from the county? It used to be close to last, I don't know if it still.
I can find that on DBI's website.
Yeah, we make a lot of efforts to reference for additional things that we need, I mean, down to staff wellness, anyway. So I think we're doing everything that we can with the staff that we have to maximize what we have, and to enhance that with grant dollars and any other initiatives that we have going, you know, our after-school, our era, where we just got a half a million dollar grant, you know, it was a collaborative effort with, you know, the county and the town in Gray. So I think we're doing everything we can, I can't imagine where we could cut anything, and still offer the additional services we're having to offer right now to kids that need more services than they've ever needed before, both academically and mentally.
Well, you know, we need to get to an amount, my recommendation, my thought is, you know, for next year, you know, these matching benefits are going to go up next year, okay? I mean, I don't want to undercut ourselves, but I'm being conservative when I say three hundred thousand dollars, and that may not cut it.
But I think if we're operating on four hundred thousand dollars, it's obviously.
Well, I had to move four hundred thousand, okay? We're not necessarily in whole, we might have to dip into fund balance this year, but next year, you know, those costs are going to increase, so the matching benefits.
If we're dipping into fund balance, it's less than one percent that we don't have, I think that's an issue.
So you're saying, so you were saying, what, three hundred and one?
I was, you know, three hundred thousand, we might not break even next year. I mean, that's a conservative.
Was eight hundred thousand the principal?
It would.
Based on everything going up?
That would cover it, you know, but what are you going to do the year after that?
We need to just ask for an even amount, or do we need to ask for like a specific, like five fifty for five sixty or?
I would just go around now, three, four, five, six, whatever the board decides on.
I'm afraid if we go too high, we won't get it.
Well, so my thought is, ask for what you need, and then they won't be able to follow, you know, with what they can do.
Yeah.
You know, I think it's reasonable that we ask for what's needed, so that they know our true account of what's necessary to run.
Yeah, I think if you look at costs, I mean, just, you know, your home costs, your insurance goes up nine, ten percent every year, gas prices, I mean, all that filters into our budget too. If you go back to our first year that we got a million dollars, and you just added, say, five percent to that, what would it be now? You know, I haven't made that calculation, but what if it's ten percent? You know, that's a hundred thousand dollars increase each year from the first year we got a million, you know, that may be up to one point five now. And we've made our budget work through those several years with using our fund balance, but that's our need.
You remember also that until we got into the pandemic, we were having to not renew positions, so when we lost a position, we did not renew it. So remember, that's kind of how we got to where we are, by not renewing positions.
And to show what that looks like in the school building, when I started as assistant principal to elementary school, we had a teacher assistant in every classroom, kindergarten through third grade. Now, I don't even have a full-time assistant in every kindergarten class, that's how many positions we've lost over that amount of time.
But other schools have some talent also.
I agree, but I'm just saying, if you want to talk about how that translates into your school building, into your everyday education of children, that's when we're talking about we're not renewing positions, that's what that translates to into the every single day that you have school.
And I think that is having detrimental effect on our kids' education as they move forward and come into the high school, absolutely, one hundred percent, no doubt about it, that is detrimental to our kids' education.
Once again, that would be done on the back burner.
Do we need to make that decision today?
Yeah.
How much?
Yeah, she's trying to hit a.
Right, that. That request needs to be presented to the county commissioners, clerk, by May fifteenth. And when we, when the board decides upon that amount, I think it's definitely needed that we have a joint board meeting with them to discuss.
And they need to understand where we're coming from and be able to ask the questions that they have of us.
Because I can present that same report that I gave to our principals and our directors last Wednesday, they can actually see it right there in black and white, you know, how the state, the federal, is not sufficient to cover all our needs, and neither are the local allotments we've got, when you talk about the county funding, Impact Aid, and timber receipts.
So you've moved four hundred around to make things work up to what's planned?
I moved four hundred thousand out of PRC nineteen into local, just so we would not overexpend on PRC nineteen, and I haven't achieved that goal yet.
So if we had one point four million from the local government, then you wouldn't have moved any funds for it?
Right.
So let's go for one point four?
I was thinking one point four, or at least one point five, but one point four is a little one point five.
More likely, we're going to keep doing this every year.
That's right.
Whatever the adjustment is, it's a good point.
You're right.
But I think the only thing for unexpected expenditures like this year, the state halls of high school, playgrounds, stuff like that pops up all the time, that money can go for.
playgrounds, stuff like that pops up all the time that that money can go for.
Well, so we've also got some aging buildings that we need to talk about as well. This is more capital outlay, but it all kind of hasn't been operating, you know. We've not replaced toilets and sinks in 50 years in some of these buildings, you know. I mean, we've got original toilets in here, if you wanna see what they look like, you know. We have classroom furniture is breaking down to the point we cannot fix it. We don't have line items in our budgets for that. That is a.
Turned tables.
Turned tables. So we're really beginning to wonder, we're gonna have to treat that in our recurring budget because we're seeing those needs. We've patched together really all we can.
Student restrooms in the high school, they're there. I mean, honestly, they are. And that's the one place in our building that's not being maintained and.
Well, that's the one, and I want it, we're conscious.
Yeah. And we have had, as a result of the budget that the legislature just adopted back in November, we did receive some funding for capital outlay, but those items are for capital outlay items only. That does not help with your local current expenses. Those items won't pay for your operational expenses. That's where our need is.
You know, the high school and middle school has been very well known. I mean, it's been maintained, and it's always never showed its age, but it's starting to show its age. So when you go in, you're starting to see.
So, you know, so any extra money we have here, we're trying to do that capital outlay type thing so we don't have additional money to go into current operating expense anywhere.
And sometimes, hey, you're looking, yes, like schools-wise, and I build issues. We have to upgrade our announcing system and bus stop. They're out of date, intercostal systems. I mean, stuff like this has got to be done at some point. Yes, good emergency, whether that could be here on board or something, this is an issue.
I discussed the value of the local current expenses. The reason why we can't get it, so I'll shoot for 2 million. With all the things that we have to fix that need to be fixed? If they say no, why are you saying no?
Part of that, too, is capital outlay, which is.
Yeah. In no way, maybe it's another million.
So what's the board's pleasure to make a request? We need a motion.
I would go with 1.5.
I think 1.5.
Yeah.
I was thinking 1.5.
I was thinking 1.4, 1.5.
Go ahead and make a motion.
I'll make a motion, we request an additional 500,000.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, 500,000.
I will add that to the budget exactly.
All right. You've got agreement for the use of activity buses, too, Mr. Nester.
Budget amendments.
Budget amendments and the local current expense budget. If I want both of those.
Do I have a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented by Mr. Green? And the fiscal year '23 local and capital outlay budget.
Someone?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
All right, this is a simple part of the program. This is a resolution that we have to renew each year so that St. Colville Valley Center can use our activity buses for their summer school. The first page is the resolution. You know, we see this each year, all we have to do is renew it. That's the first page. The rest of the pages are the agreement that you can keep. That's, if this resolution is renewed, then the agreement, which is the last pages, we submit that to St. Colville Valley Center. We sign and notarize that agreement, and they do as well. But the resolution has to be renewed in order to do that.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the use of the activity buses at St. Colville Valley Center? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? I get it for you. All right. Federal programs, annual review grants. Krista K?
She didn't give that out, but. I'll be, I think I gave that one once. You did, but. Okay, I'll quickly go over this. Each year, as you know, at the end of the year, we review the federal program grants that are needed to be approved before the new grants are ready, which is coming up really soon here at the end of May. I'll start with PRC 49, and that is our Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. And that is our preschool grant. We receive just a little bit of money, and that money is being declining every year. Right now, we are able to fund 45% of one of our teacher assistants at a kid's place to put an extra person down there for students that we have that have high needs, are exceptional children. But again, we're seeing a decline in that yearly. I'm not sure why, we've been trying to find that question out from the state department. PRC 60, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, that is for our students and grades kindergarten through 12th grade. This year's allotment for that was $308,178.50 with a carryover. Hopefully, we anticipate that amount next year. We did receive a little additional money, approximately $60,000 later on in the year to supplement that federal budget for students with disabilities. That particular grant right now funds one full-time teacher, 40% of another teacher, five full-time teacher assistant positions in exceptional children. We buy supplies and materials for most of your needs, children, and we also take some workshop expenses for teachers out of that budget. We'll flip over to PRC 50, that is our Title I grant for Robbinsville Elementary, it's our one Title I school. That budget allotment this year with the carryover from last year was $418,473.61. We are seeing a decline again in this area. We received about $30,000 less than what we had been getting, and what I was told it was due to the census data. And we're also seeing that it were having an effect from students not filling out their free and reduced lunch forms, which plays a big part into this because that's part of our qualifying ways that we can qualify for Title I funding. The use of this funds is supplemental to core instruction for Robbinsville Elementary School. We fund such things as parental involvement activities, which is a big requirement of ESSA. Also, we fund the aid full-time teacher assistance we have there at the elementary school through this. 5% of the behavior liaison, 15% of the director's salary, 25% of the administrative assistant's salary, and after-school tuition for Robbinsville Elementary School. In addition, like I said, supplemental aids and supports for Robbinsville Elementary that otherwise we would not be able to have would be our research-based programs such as foundations, Just Works, Never Worlds, extreme reading. We just ordered a bunch of decodable readers as we're changing some of the literacy instruction curriculum for next year. Those would not be possible without the use of Title I funds. We also fund our universal screener assessments that's required through the multi-tiered system of support, MDSF. And we also have a set aside amount, just a small amount, for homeless students and try to capitalize on their needs as they come about. Any questions so far? PRC 103 is Title II, improvement teacher quality. Again, we used to be able to pay more teachers out of that. Last year, we were able to fund 1.4 FTE out of that. This year, we're only be able to fund one full-time teacher assistant salary out of that. And we hope that we can continue that next year, depending on the funding allotment that comes down. And on the last page, it was flip over rule of the law. We come schools, we've used this money for several years now. This year's allotment with the carryover was $41,879.10. We've been using that money over the last few years to help with the funding of a nurse at our Robbinsville Elementary School. And our intent is to continue to do that as long as funds are available. And the last one is PRC 108. We got this PRC several years ago, it's Title IV. This money with the allotment this year was $55,193.11. And we've seen that pretty steady over the last couple of years, that amount has remained. And we use it to support, save, and help the students. A well-rounded education for students, and a little bit of technology, infrastructure, we can spend out of that fund as well. And so each year, we meet on that and see what the needs of the store are as a school system as a whole, and spend that money accordingly and according to those specified purposes.
You just had a public meeting.
We had a public speaking, yes, last night, and yes, this was ran in the paper two consecutive weeks prior to this. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. K. Personnel, Ms. Knight?
Yes, during closed session, I'll bring you a host of names for the positions, some staff positions, and also contracts for the upcoming school year.
Facilities, Ms. Knight?
I already talked to you about the middle school, unless you have more questions. Couple good things that our high school up forward, this input is finished now. Make sure that you get a chance to go and look at it. Elementary GON is, we're still waiting on bleachers, hopefully by year this summer between the blockades out there and Canadian strip truckers, I guess, you know, how to get those. They play their innovative, and it looks like they were, high school GON needs a teacher now also, which is out of this.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Knight. Board meeting time and work session discussion. Ms. Knight?
Yes, and I'll turn this back over to you, but you've had a board member request to discuss the board meeting time and also discuss the possibility of work sessions. So I'll turn that back over to you and turn it over to the board.
Okay. If I'm not mistaken, we need to have some information on why we've already turned this down once, the board meeting time, and we need some information on why.
Okay, I guess I just want, and I know change is very, very hard. I know change is very hard, and I appreciate Chairman Nelson that you put this on the agenda. But, and it did die one time for lack of motion, and I'm not asking that we do this. I mean, anytime soon, we need to maybe. But at this time, I have done extensive research on this, and we are the only board that meets in the morning. I have been on every single, all 100 county websites. And they meet at different times, anywhere from 4:00, 4:30, I mean, to the evening. And I would like to begin this dialogue about possible consideration in changing this because I think, and I think it's important for our board input to have into this. As you know, we are a public forum for our citizens, our staff, and our students. And I think at 10 o'clock meeting, we do not meet the needs of the community. As a board, we are discussing agenda items that affect the lives and livelihoods of our staff as well as our students. As a board, we meet at a time when our staff is working. Most of our citizens are working, and students are in school at this time. And it makes us less transparent, and it makes us less accountable to our community. Principals, you're out of your schools. Right now, if you have a lockdown, you cannot get back to your schools. And I know there's times you're out of your schools because of meetings. But this time is avoidable, and you could be in your schools. I realize that this meeting is being streamed, which most information is hard to hear because there is no sound system. And the access, there is no closed caption to my understanding, correct? We don't have closed caption? I don't think we do. I would like for administrators to think about this. Administrators, I would like for you to think about this. But board members, I'd like for you to answer.
Well, like I said.
As our employees, we have employees. And how would you feel at 10 o'clock about them watching a board meeting, a 10 o'clock board meeting? How would you feel about that?
Well, I've heard that some teachers are actually using this as a teaching tool in the elementary and the middle school. I don't know about the high school.
Yeah, in the high school also.
Yeah.
Okay, how are they doing that?
They're allowing kids, I know in the high school, I've got some teachers that have allowed the kids, you know, streaming the meeting, letting the kids see it in their classroom, and then, you know, using it pretty sensibly and things like that, so.
Okay, so when.
I'm not saying it's every board meeting they're doing that.
No.
Or they have them.
But I know when I was a teacher and we had these 10 o'clock board meetings, I was always saying, you know, when people would come back, "Well, what happened at the board meeting?" This was before that we streamed the board meetings. And I've even had people out in the community, "I can't come because I'm working, and I need to come because of my student, I need to present something to the board." We'd even had staff to write letters because they couldn't come to the board meeting at this time. Now, they may have written letters anyhow.
Who did they write the letters to?
They want us, they wrote the letters to us.
I haven't seen a letter.
Oh, yeah, you got, you got letters. You got some letters from some teachers. No, we got, I know we had, had to, for sure. In other words, and it was back during the COVID, of course.
The COVID, but come anyway, during COVID.
Now, I'm not saying let's do that, I'm saying let's think about this. And I would like to move that we think about changing this because we are the only county in North Carolina.
That's not, that's not a.
I think it's very relevant because the fact that parents can't come, citizens can't come, and the community cannot come. And I would like for us to think about this, and maybe we need to wait till we swear in a new board before and give them the opportunity. But I think because parents, staff, and community, and because we are a public forum, this is not a public forum. We have no one from the public here, to my knowledge, okay? And I know the last time we said something about sports. I do not want sports to trump this and make this a public forum, less transparent and less accountable. Now, I'm not asking for a motion, Chairman Nelson, that we do this. I'm just asking that we, and you know, even on websites that I've been on, I have been on this board a year and three months or four months, and I have yet to be in a work session. And I have, and it would make meetings much, much shorter if we had some work sessions. And I realize we can't decide on anything in work sessions. But I see on these websites that school boards are having work, a lot of school boards have work sessions, not every month, but I've not been in a single, single one. And I think as a board, let's not make this meeting convenient for us and our staff and our principals. Let's make it convenient for our community. So that being said, we can, I would like for us to maybe get some feedback from the community, from parents, because I think that's important. I think feedback is very important for this board to have from our community. I think it's very important.
All right, work sessions, just, that would mean all of us would be here?
Well, I've never been in a work session, I don't have that work.
Well, we would have to all be here, and that means Ms. Davis would have to be here and Ms. Knight.
Because I know commissioners have work sessions, and a lot of the other entities have work sessions. I don't know.
Would you please let me finish? And that means we would have to be paid as well as Ms. Davis, okay? And we're fighting a budget crisis. Mr. Green has presented that very well. And I would like to hear what Mr. Matheson, Ms. Hooper, and Ms. Walsh would have to say because they have duties after school. I know Mr. Allison here is in the late, let me finish. Late fall and all winter, he's gonna be at practice and games with the middle school.
We need one, we need one.
I understand that.
We need one time a month.
I understand that. I understand that. But, and then in the spring, you're going to eliminate me, okay? I just, just because.
For one board meeting, I don't think it's going to make a difference.
A hundred and fourteen other boards meet in the afternoon, doesn't, we're an entity in ourselves.
I think we're outdated.
You, you're the only one that has ever brought this up.
Well, but simply because I've had parents ask me, I've had citizens ask me, I've had people ask me.
Have you had people ask you why we meet at ten?
No.
Have you?
No.
Have you, Ms. Knight?
Uh, no. I wouldn't ask me that.
Yes, oh, I've never had.
Well, I guess they feel more comfortable approaching me. I don't have any idea why, but I, I know I have one parent, she said, you know, I have, I can't come because what I do for a living, and I really need to come and talk to the board about my student, I can't, I, I'm seven employees.
Is her student a problem?
No, her student's not a problem. There was a problem, and I, I referred, I referred her to the principal.
Right, that's, and that's the way, that's the way it should work.
But she really wanted to come and talk. But I'm, like I said, I'm just going to throw that out there, throw it out, and let's get some community feedback, maybe let's, why can we not get some staff and community feedback? And if it doesn't, why, then we'll continue to meet at ten o'clock, that's about it.
Mr. Matheson, what's your thoughts of the afternoon meetings?
So, I, I was, all I can do, I've never had afternoon meetings since I've been principal or assistant principal of high school. I know there was a time in the past, years and years ago, where, where I think they were in the afternoon, but, I mean, I will just say, I mean, I have, it is what it is. I have lots of after-school responsibilities, you know, more than probably Ms. Hooper or Ms. Walsh, but, you know, by a long shot. And that's just another afternoon night that period, but it's not about me, it's about the kids and our teachers. I will say, over the years, I have had teachers request to come to board meetings at various times, and never once have I denied that request. We, if they needed to be here, if they came to me, they were allowed to be here and we covered their classes, and I will continue to do that.
Well, I think that makes sense.
Hopefully, I'm, I'm an employee of Board of Education, and if I'm asked to be here in the afternoon, I will be here, but if I like the ten o'clock meeting, yes, I do.
Do you, do you agree that maybe other 99 counties have principals in the same situation? And maybe they don't have their principals on? I don't know if they do have principals or principals on.
I don't think you have an option but to have your, your administrative staff here.
But you have other folks, you have assistant principals, and you have athletic directors, and you have other administrators that can go to function after school. And if we could get our board, if we could get our meetings down to a decent time through maybe some, well, like you say, if you say work sessions cost money, I didn't, I thought, I didn't know that we had to pay for that. But I'm saying, if we could condense this, it wouldn't be, you know, it wouldn't be as, as long, so. But I do know you have other people because you can't be everywhere all the time, and it is one, it is one meeting a month, and that is, you know, you knew that. And, and, and like I say, maybe we put this on the back burner till we get, till we swear in a new board, it may be the same people, it may not be the same people.
I'd like to say something if I could, Mr. Chair. One thing, a work session is not a legal.
That's right.
There are four kinds of legal meetings that this Board of Director has, and that's regular, special call, emergency, and recess meeting. It is the business of the board, and this is law, to conduct their business at the regular board meeting. You cannot conduct and vote.
That's true.
On business at other types of meetings.
That's true.
There are some exceptions. You can't have a special call meeting amid the agenda, a million and a half dollar budget, and you can't do that. The board is to conduct its business at the regular called meeting.
So a work session.
It has to have a special, so wait, if there has to be a special fine, emergency, or recess meeting. So a work session is a fiction that helps boards complete a project, for example. Your CEO, or, excuse me, CFO said, November, May 15th is a certain deadline, so you have a certain deadline, June 30th. You may need a special work session, but it's still a, an official meeting, you still have to have your board members, and you still pay. So, a work session is not something you do because you have a big agenda. You have a big agenda because you have, these are, this is what you conduct at your regular meeting. A work session is to meet a deadline or more time to work on the budget. I think you all, you've all routinely done a special work session at the end of June for, for budget because rally's waiting for it. So, don't, don't make a spec, a work session a regular meeting. It's the exception, and it's not even recognized by the law, there are four types of legal meetings. So it's not something you do all the time, it's something you do. An emerg, it's not an emergency. Emergency has its own definition.
So what?
So, here's, here's the other thing. Whatever the board does, you've mentioned extensive research, 100 counties, we have 115 Boards of Education in North Carolina. The board needs data. And you all passed a policy that, in 2335, advanced delivery of meeting materials. And I would like to see that happen because it's, it's everyone's time. But you have a policy that it's advanced delivery of meeting materials, and then it's your superintendent's duty to get those materials out to the board meeting. And, and that's something, if you're going to consider an item, there needs to be, you need to stick with your policy and get advanced material. And if there's, if you have extensive research from the 115 counties, you know, get it, get it to Angie, you're going to have to.
Or why do they, why do other counties need it that time, would you say?
I don't know, I mean, I haven't seen that. I, I've, I've not seen the research on 115 boards yet. That's your job to get it to the rest of the board meeting.
Well, I have.
Chip comes with something, or Shane comes with something, we, we've got to get the data to the board before we get an agenda.
Well, I have a call in, but, but I have not got the call back, so I will try to. But that, I just wanted to discuss that, didn't want to vote on it, I would just, I would, maybe Ms. Knight, if you could, how does the board feel about getting some feedback? I mean, I think feedback is great, I think as a board, we need feedback.
Mr. Chairman, in fact, I did, and I told the board earlier, I need to leave at 12, so I'm looking late now.
Right, that's right.
How our community feels, how our teachers feel, and how our, just, like I say, we're a public, see, because we're a public forum. I don't think at ten o'clock, we are a public forum. Because everybody can't come. That's my jest. But we can move on and, and possibly, maybe there'll be some dialogue among community members, maybe, I don't know, Ms. Knight, could you get out a survey? Would that, would that help?
That would be up to the board.
That would be, that would be some data.
As a board.
That would be some data. You wanted data, so the best data you can get is some, some research, some surveys.
That, it, it would be, the board as a whole, making that recommendation to me, you know, I'll do whatever the board's pleasure, as it always is.
Well, it's my understanding that they had meetings at night before I came on the board.
Well, they, yeah.
And nobody showed up.
No, that, times have changed. And they may, and they may not, they may not, but at least they could watch it at home when they're off work instead of having to try to watch it. Now, you say it's okay, so principals, you're okay with teachers watching, I'm not, I said I wasn't going to ask that question. How do you feel about employees watching the meeting during school hours?
Do they?
And, would it be okay with you?
And if I was friends, your choice, and I would take some, yeah.
May I, may I say something?
Sure.
The middle school teachers, we have several that watch it as it's live, as it's happening, but we have several that watch the recordings version. I also, as I look around the room, there's about six people, I think if I'm not mistaken in here, that have children or grandchildren. I know Ms. Knight said not to think about sports, but they play sports, they're in the band, and they have after-school activities also that parents and grandparents don't want to miss. And I also, over half of staff works in after-school, so having it at a later time would, would not make it any easier than it is now. We also have teachers who drive buses, and most importantly, at 3:20, I have teachers, including myself, who are spent. We don't have anything else to give. And so, for that reason, I like the ten o'clock meeting. You can also ask Ms. Wiggins here, if we have an issue with a kid where we have to call mobile prices and those kind of things, those usually last way after school.
Six, seven, eight.
And there may be times we, we can't come.
And that's true, and so you have, you have someone that you can send. You have someone you can, you can send.
Not always, if it's on a Tuesday and there's a baseball game, my assistant coach is at the baseball game, I mean, my assistant, he's my assistant coach, he's at the baseball game, so.
Well, yes, if, there's a lot of ifs, but those things, we, like I say, we meet one time a month, and those things would be, you, you, you're, you're talking like we just meet all the time, and we certainly don't. I personally don't think we meet enough.
And we let our teachers, if we have teachers that request to come, and we've asked teachers to come before, so.
We, we really don't have any additional attendance during the summer months when we don't have staff here, when we do, when they, when they could come.
June, July.
But certainly, I mean, I'm open to whatever the board wants to do, I'll work for the board, so. And I'm here anyway, probably, leaving this as well.
Well, I'm not asking that we move the time right now, I'm just asking that we maybe get some feedback, some community feedback, some teacher feedback, some parent feedback, and if it's fine with them, you know, I, I think that is our best, that, that, that would be our best reason for even moving the meeting, is the fact that we are a public forum, and at ten o'clock, we are not a public forum.
Do we, is, is there going to be a motion for a directive for me to get the feedback, or how will that work?
I don't know, people maybe just listen, will, will give you some feedback, I don't know.
I, I feel like that's an additional duty for me that I'll need to be directed to, to do as a board.
But I do want to say, I want to thank Ms. Knight for getting the information out about our board meetings, you know, what, what goes on and that sort of thing, because that, that has happened, and I appreciate that, because I do know that that information gets out, and I thank you for that. I guess, I guess you're the one that gets that out, thank you. Okay, we can move on, Mr. Nelson, I, I just, I want to present that.
Ms. Knight, COVID update, resolution, policy review.
So, as it happens at each month for the last several, it is up to you to decide whether we continue to be mask optional or go back to mask mandates. I will tell you, based on our data, that we may have had a few positive cases here or there, but as a whole, we're pretty much at zero with staff and students, and have been on that holding pattern for quite some time.
Do I have a motion to stay mask optional? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right, Ms. Davis.
All right.
Board of Policies.
On the attachment to the agenda, the, let's see, first and second reading. Let's do second reading first. We looked at those from the April board meeting, and your Title 19, which is critical to be in all the handbooks you'll note on today, and your Title 19 has Kevin White as the Title Nine Coordinator, his address, email, and telephone number, which are redefined, and they'll be in the policy, and that's required to be in the policy. If you look at 5210 from second read, that is the one that the board needs to make a decision. 5210 is distribution and display of non-school material. That's always been a tough subject, because you have a captured audience, as we say, with your hundreds and hundreds of students, so lots of people want to distribute and display non-school material. The law gives the, some flexibility to the boards in, in three options. Your prior policy, you adopted the second option, and then to make clear, after the fourth option, it goes, that you have in your packet, it goes to D and the rest of the policy, which happens to be around eleven pages, so it all stays, but it's just how you display. And if you do option four, that is for high school only, you would have to adopt a different option for the elementary and the middle school.
Ms. Davis, just to speak to that very quickly, when we're talking about display and distribution of non-school materials, this does include groups like the Gideon's.
Include groups like what?
The Gideon's, when they come in and might want to hand out.
Not the elementary school effort.
Right, but this policy is addressing those type of groups.
Yes.
Right, so I won't.
And not permitting it.
And not permitting it, so I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that.
You're talking about, in distribution and display material, it's a public school for certain age children. While you're a public board, there are many more limitations on exposure of material to children. So, you're looking at, this is nonprofit, educational, recreational, it's not about organizations that are in the business of soliciting or handing out material. It's considered controversial for public schools. So, and as I say, your option two is what you've always gone with, and it's.
But say, for example, the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, which is a student organization.
That's not an outside organization.
That's not an outside organization, so if the groups, if those groups of students were to come and, and address issues, that's not an outside one.
It's not an outside, but remember, it's not necessarily school material.
Right.
Okay, so this is, you have lots of student organizations, but what the organization may distribute is not necessarily school. Basically, you do not, this, this policy came about, basically started off, it was always school material, it's, that's an issue. But, and you started with some non-profits and schools that were themselves up to, you know, public use, you have boy scouts, things like that. So that's the whole purpose of the policy. It's still, what your administrators can allow to be displayed is, is, is still very limited. It's just, you're going to completely limit it with option one, two is slightly broader, three is a category where most people go, because four is only limited, there's actually been a Supreme Court case on option four, and it's definitely just high school students of a certain age.
We have option two, is that what we have?
No, you have option three.
We have three.
And have that for years.
We've not yet had issues with having option three. I don't know if I would be any less, more or less restrictive since we've really not had any issues with that. My recommendation would be continue with option three, and I support the suggestion.
Yeah, but option four puts on your height, well, it, it puts a, a, it's a huge burden on the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school.
We do not have the capacity nor the time.
Yeah.
And all the energy to do any additional capacity. And nor the energy to do any additional capacity, or, you know, that stuff, so, beyond what we're doing. I don't know, so. I think high school's a little more than they're doing.
Now, do we need to vote on option three? Do we need?
Yeah, you need to, well, right, you need to vote in 5210 to adopt option three, to continue with option three. And then to vote on all the second read.
Yeah, I knew to do that.
Do I have a motion to approve option three on policy number 5210?
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Davis.
Okay, your second, second, your first read, and I need your staff to chime in, make sure about this, right? Policy 3460 is graduation requirements, and if you'll go to 3C, 3C is what they could change at the high school, addressing a pathway in high school in their degree, career, and technical education class, that could lead to pathway completion with the remaining additional credits. So it's 3C. David, if you'll be sure to check that or have air.
Yeah, that, that, that does sound, that is the read, and that, just so you know, students have so many electives they can take, and basically this will affect freshmen and sophomore more than anyone else, because as they come into high school, that will be a requirement that they will have to meet, and our hope is, we'll get more students enrolled in the CTE program, and we'll give them skills that they can use upon graduation, and lead to having more pathway completion. That's why we wrote that down.
Okay, and then 4326, random drug testing. If you'll look at page five, there are multiple changes there, and it's to come with, Mr. Moody, I'm working with Mr. Moody on this one. It's to come in line with proper testing procedure, the urine test, number two, the oral fluid testing or mouth swab, then hair drug, hair drug testing, that was revised to comport with what, how hair testing is done, and number, and D, that is adminis, the changes there, or an administrator is involved with that, with number D, except as opposed to used to be principal. So, page five, change substantially, but it's ought to comport with student random drug testing.
Oh, Mr. Madison, I think Mr. Moody left. Do you have any idea where those, and you might, Ms. Knight, where those funds come from to dress, drug test?
So the funds to drug test athletes come from the athletic department, we pay for those. The funds to drug test the drivers and the people that park, you know, the students that park on our campus, I think that maybe comes through safe schools or somewhere in Central Austin, based on that. Mr. Moody, thanks.
So we drug test too now?
Yes, so we drug test, we random drug test, any student that parks and drives on campus is also part of the random drug test. Generally, what we do is we test ten students that park on campus, ten athletes, and five middle school athletes each time that we have a random drug test. So there's twenty-five students, and those are chosen by the company that, that we employ to come in and test.
Well, I'll just tell you this, the North Carolina School Board Association, the law, the law workshop that I just got through taking, they, most schools have dropped, I don't agree with it, have dropped drug testing athletes, or drug testing period. For what reason, I don't know, I just know that was presented, so I found that very interesting, as to why all the school systems have done that.
I will tell you, too, that the Smoky Mountain Conference Athletic Directors in a recent meeting had a discussion about random drug testing and the possibility of all the schools aligning the testing, who they use, and also what the repercussions are, because it does vary from school to school, team to team, and so there is a discussion among them, which that would mean each board would then have to approve, you know, what the Smoky Mountain Conference came up with, but that is a discussion among the athletic.
Well, I found it very interesting when this fellow presented that, and they said that law schools had dropped that.
Yeah, so I'll tell you, the biggest intent that we continue to do drug testing for is to help the child.
Yes.
I mean, that, that really is, if you can consider the intent behind it, is to help that child. There's not, not the punitive part of it, I mean, there are some consequences that would help from athletics or from driving privileges, but to give that child some help, and that is part of our policy.
And then there was another thing that also, that, that at proms, they don't, they have also dropped, I got this off of the law conference, that they have dropped breathalyzer tests. Now, where does that money come from? Does, does the sheriff do that?
That, that's free.
That's free?
Yeah, in the past.
We like free.
Yeah, in the past, we had to use, I, the principal, I purchased through funds in high school, the little straws that they'd always do, but now they have a device, so you don't even use the straw, and SRO George, and, you know, he has that, and so does Jack at the elementary, and they bring those and they use them. At the prom this past weekend, we did not breathalyze kids as they went into the prom, but we breathalyzed them as they left.
Oh, I think that's very.
Because we didn't have, there were, you know, there were some rumors, you know, about possibly some kids sneaking some stuff in, and so we decided we would test them as they left.
Well, and that's when they're fixing to go.
That's when they're fixing to get in the car. And, you know, so that was very successful, we had obviously zero kids, and had a wonderful prom, maybe one of the best ones since I've been at the high school.
And it's an optional activity, they don't.
Yes, that's great.
Well, I just want to pay so long to you, because I did, I did format it my, on the North Carolina School Board Association Law Conference, and I did so.
David, when you work with the rest of the conference, you all have a very fair.
Yes.
Student random drug testing for athletes in campus parks.
Yes.
It, it is non-punitive. I mean, there's some consequences, but it's community service.
Correct, yeah.
Just twenty-five days off the team.
Drug counseling, that's a part of that.
So if the other, some of the other.
Yes.
So, I mean, you've all adopted a non-punitive.
Yes.
I think the discrepancies come in between, in the conference within playing time, and how many people do out, and that's not consistent across the conference.
Well, that's good, no.
It is. Okay, policy 4600, student fees and charges, and charges presented to that, if you'll go to, go to the fourth paragraph and the fifth paragraph, those are brand new, and we made, remember, this is first reading on these, and I was working with staff to, to nail down what we need to, student fees and charges, never addressed meal charges. So, paragraph four, meal charges in the cafeteria cannot be paid, that is a federal guideline. There are no, there's no forgiveness of student debt in the cafeteria. Federal guidelines regulate the required payment for meal charges. Ms. Moody can't say, well, we have to take ten dollars off here, a thousand dollars off here. There is no excuse for meal charges, so they have to come from somewhere. All lunchroom charges are carried forward to the next school year and continue to accumulate. Pursuant to graduation requirements, the student must clear all debts with the school. And the graduation requirements, I say, see policy 6240 and the meal charge policy. When I say that federal guidelines regulate the required payment for meal charges, there's no waiver of a meal charge, or they have, the money has to be found somewhere else. Your CFO has found the money, and Lester's keeping a running tab, and it's, it's substantial. So the meal charge policy is on here, too, for some revisions. And then the new, the last paragraph is, in order to participate in graduation exercises and to have transcripts released, there's two things you can control. The student must have any debt with Robbinsville High School, I'm going to strike the S there, and Grand County Schools paying for. So that, that's a substantial statement, and a change. The change being, meal charges in the cafeteria cannot be waived. People think they can do, they can, it's a federal regulation. You're coming up with the money somewhere, and Lester has it running, and he can maybe address that in the next fourth read, it's substantial. And you take it from one of your line lagers, some laws, in the federal office.
Mr. Madison, do you know if you have any seniors this year in that situation that haven't paid their?
We do still have some outstanding debt.
That I have to realize.
Yeah, a lot of times they don't pay after that week, honestly, graduation. We have a lot of seniors that have come in and already cleared their debt with both the lunchroom and the high school office media center. Many have already paid, but we do still have some.
So what Lester's doing is shifting the money to the cafeteria, but keeping tabs on what's being charged, because you can't have your cafeteria waiving the meal charges up. He finds the money on another line item, shifts it over, but leaves a running tab of all the unpaid amounts. If you'll go to, and we'll come back to, go to 6240, meal charges, breakfast and lunch. Of course, these two go hand in hand, you know, you amended your student fees and charge policies to have in writing that, that meals are going to continue and accumulate, and that it's part of graduation. And then you look at 6240, meal charge policy, breakfast and lunch, and go to number six, and that was rewritten. If you'll read number six, by regulation, charges owed at the end of the school year must be paid. Child nutrition is not permitted to write off charges. All lunchroom balances are carried forward to the next school year and continue to accumulate. Pursuant to graduation requirements, the student must clear all debts and responsibility with the school. And that sends you back to what we just looked at, 4600, collection fees before graduation. So those two go hand in hand. And remember, though, your policy was, on your meal charge policy, was 6240, every effort is made and required, and made by the principal. And the principal is even permitted now to complete the application for now, hassle to qualify for free or reduced lunch, and your principals felt harmless if they made a mistake in the application. So if your principals have any knowledge, any basis of the family situation, the principal can complete the free or reduced application and not be liable. And that, that might help if some of these, but on purpose, we say, she just can't get the parents to make the application to be eligible. Community use 5030, the bottom of page one, number six was added, what, one through six is what's not permitted, it's not permitted to use school facilities and utilize inflatables that are commonly referred to as bouncy houses or any to other type of inflatable structure. So remember, word, inflatable.
You always want to be clear, something that they could be inside and go all the way in, that's the issue.
And then page seven, there was an asterisk, that's the application for a person or entity utilizing school facilities, and where it says purpose of use, there's an asterisk added, and then you go to where the asterisk is, no bouncy houses or other types of inflatable.
Is that covered? Well, I think there's a, I think we need to be very specific, when there's, the students can be inside, because the, the liability issue is when the students could be inside the inflatable.
So a slide, a slide inflatable?
Well, I mean, if you're going to be in a inflatable tent, and you're touching ground, your feet are not inside. I mean, you know, there is a, there's a difference in going up a, I don't know, a cube over here versus that you can get in versus, you know, something that you can just throw things on. So, I mean, inflatables, I think is a very general term, I think that somehow or another, it needs to be phrased, inflatables that, that the students can be inside, or help me.
So that works, that's a little slide.
When you say inside, do you mean covered, or do you mean all?
I mean, all, I mean, in.
What about an inflatable that's a slide?
That's what I'm saying, they have little.
Yeah, they have, they're real popular parties. Is the slide, is that, inflatables are a problem, they are some.
Well, it's inflatable, isn't it?
For school.
But I think that anything that can be on, I think.
So is that, is that also included if they're tied down?
Yes, tied down does not make any difference.
And so, but just to, to make a difference, like, there's, there's some that's the slide that's open, the bouncy house that's closed, the little gladiator things that they're standing on, it's not enclosed, but they're on it. But then there's like the inflatable softball throw, where it's inflatable, but the kid's not in it or on it, the kid's still on the ground. So if the inflatable blew away, the kid's not going to be affected in any way.
And I know this is like, y'all is a more problem, or you're saying this, that there's a, it's important to, to kids and to us to be able to bring some things here that are fun for kids, but yet safe, so.
This policy studies, I'll just tell y'all, ladies, I hate it. Well, but the same kind of deal is why, and I know we have, there is something, there's something that they run through a tube, and try to brace each other to go out the other end. Well, you can't, you can't see them, because I've watched them, and they, you can't see them, you just catch them when they come out the other end, but the little thing, they go up the steps, it's blood, blood bowl up, you watch them go up the steps, and they slide down.
But it's a point of, because they're on it, in the liability with the board.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I'll tell you, at the high school, you know, we have field day, we kind of started the field day several, the inflatables are, they were a very important part of that. There are a lot of kids that, you know, they would play the games, and, you know, the flag football, the softball, the different things like that, but they would stay on those inflatables all day long.
One of my favorites, same, those balls you had to get in.
Oh, I still got those.
Your feet are still on the ground.
Yeah, we still got those.
So, yeah, I mean, it is a poor decision, I mean, so these inflatable companies have to have, Suzie, help me out, a million dollar liability policy. If they can produce that, I mean, the liability, we've got to make sure that the liability's on them and not the school.
Yeah, that's not wins, surely we would not do, you know.
Well, I make sure that we would have.
Well, but who's going to make that decision? You going to stand there and with the, you know, gauge what the win is? I mean, so who's going to take that responsibility? Yeah, I mean, you've got that to think about.
Well, the base should, the inflatable people should have a policy knowing what the wind speed should be before they can not use it.
Yeah, I mean, that's part of their liability.
That is part of their liability.
So, I mean, it's really a board decision, if you want to, and Ellen's way in here about liability, because it's not my area.
Well, my, my son had a summer job hauling around inflatables.
Yeah, replenish yourself.
Team impact.
They put it at any house to pay the price, they put it in, but he carried it around and picked up.
I think if they produce the paperwork and the thing, you know, we have, do we have, do we ever get paperwork?
Absolutely, we have, we have never had one at the high school, probably, they were really not have the policy in hand.
Probably not, I think we all have to.
Do away with it.
But the paperwork is everything.
I mean, it's just a, is this a suggestion?
It's the use of school facility.
Yeah, from the, from the state liability point, it's a decision y'all need to make.
I think it's, I think it's.
How does this seem, that she's the one that would know the back cause?
A whole policy or just the inflatable?
No, we have play.
Wait, wait, please leave, wait, because you're the one that deals with the liability.
Well, it's not necessarily just the school system, you have other people that use it.
So you can't make the policy where the school system can use it, no one else can have it.
No one else can put an inflatable on our campus.
Except school employees.
Now, I will say, we also have this label before that was inside the gym, you know, uh, that planetary, that's inflatable, that's getting, that's a different story. You know, but if you write it like this.
Well, I even asked if we have inflatables and just put them inside the lower gym, cover the floor and everything where they're inside, and I've still been told no.
Well, at science, at science night, we had them, long time ago, we had the jumpy house.
Yeah, I, I, I'm familiar with it. This is recent that this has come.
You have staff monitoring those, every staff has.
Just know that.
I did, I heard that.
Yeah, I did.
So staff.
So what, what? So, so let, let Suzie know what I'm hearing, because part of it is the way that the waiver is written and whether it's covers the board or not, so.
I think what, okay, in this community use facilities, you need a policy because schools are not open to just employees, okay? And this is the parameter. So you'll have a community use policy and you try to get a handle on it with, um, the application contract, okay? And then you also have the waiver of liability. Um, and so the entity acknowledges they have the liability. But Suzie just reminded me, we've had several entities on campus and in their contract that's been signed by the school, an employee, administrator, had a waiver of liability for the company. So we don't need to be signing any of their documents because it had a waiver of liability and it involved balancing out.
Well, you just get a company that doesn't do, excuse me, you get a company that doesn't do that. And I'm sure that.
Probably hard to find one, but we shouldn't be signing anything with waivers of liability.
So, I mean, they'll bring their, their, their policy, but within their policy, it turns it right around and says, but we're really not responsible.
Right.
Except for, yeah, so, but, but I mean, I think we have had some responsible companies in the past. I hate to take this away, I think that there's a way to admit it where the responsibility falls with us to make sure we've got the right paperwork, that we've got the, the things that are manned in the correct way, like they say they're gonna man them, maybe they can't man their own stuff.
And last year, I mean, at ours, that's, they did have. You know, there were a couple things like where they threw a baseball, stuff where we had staffing there, but the main blowups that we had, they manned.
And I do think though, that I would prefer there not to be outside of the school, that we don't take on that responsibility figuring out who has a bouncy house and who doesn't not. That, that is more than we need to go by and drive by on a Saturday and see there's a bouncy house and there's nobody down there around it, or it's not ten if they're that way. So I, I would, I would recommend that.
And not sign their contract.
We'll sign theirs contract.
No, they sign ours, which is the use of the facility and the waiver of liability. I mean, our, it's our way of liability, but they have to sign.
I mean, I still will take all the phone work from kids, which we have, but I think there needs to be some pretty clear parameters.
So delete number six?
Yes. Delete number six, I would suggest, because I think we got responsible principals, I personally think we do, that you will do the right thing, not have trouble in the past.
All right, so do we need anything, so, but do we, where does the community use?
You can't sign your contract, so you can't.
That needs to be in that policy, somewhere.
So this policy, and she's got its community use though, correct? I mean, so technically.
So it needs to stay in the community.
Have you, have you done?
Yeah, but having inflatables like the community coming in, that needs to stay in our.
It needs to stay in that.
Yes, but as far as the school goes, if we bring the inflatables in, then that might could be okay.
And Suzie said the company that we've used in our active attractions is good, is lo, is good.
Okay, so, oh, I see what you're saying. So leave it in here for the community.
For the community, but we're okay, right?
And just know, and just know board that you're gonna get some response from the community because they wanna have a, you know, birthday party, they wanna have a children's fair, they wanna bring in, you know, relive life and bring in bouncy houses, but that is a huge liability for board because we don't control the personnel that are there. And even they have a policy, I think there's a lot of liability for the board if we're not in charge of that.
And then sometimes you may not know that they're gonna have that.
Exactly, so it has to be in that policy. Exactly.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the meal charge policy, breakfast and lunch sixty-two forty, student fees and charges forty-six hundred, student random drug testing for athletes and campus parking students forty-three twenty-six, graduation requirements thirty-four sixty?
This is first reading.
How about this was second?
This is the second reading.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
You can just say that as a whole, as presented.
Do I have a motion to approve the second reading? I thought that was second reading. Title nine, non-discrimination on basis of sex, policy seventeen twenty, remote participation in board meetings, policy twenty-three oh two, curriculum development, policy thirty-one hundred, student behavior policy, policy forty-three hundred, distribution and display of non-school material, policy fifty-two ten, and employee dress and appearance, policy seventy-three forty. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second. Do I have all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. All right.
Anne.
Ms. Moody, you are in.
Anne Moody.
Child nutrition price increase.
This is a short swing, we have to start. Okay, um, for the last two years, everybody's been able to eat free lunch and free breakfast, and I'm still holding out hoping that we might be able to do that this year. They've not really decided, and last year, they decided the day before school started, and literally, the day before. So, um, because we've had a lot of price increase, we've had salaries go up, our delivery fee has increased per case.
Does the people want to refer to some of the problems?
Well, I gave, I talked to Mr. Nelson this morning. For example, we used to be able to get a case of one hundred garbage bags for twenty-nine dollars. That case of garbage bag is now a hundred and five dollars. So, uh, we used to get the five point five ounce portion cups, so we put our friend in for thirty-nine dollars a case, that case is now one sixty. So supplies.
If you can even get them.
If you can even get them. We're really having a hard time getting supplies. I've had to order bone bowls and trays and everything from all over the state, and we did buy the hard trays, we had went back to the hard trays, so that helps with some of the cost on those, and eventually those will pay for themselves. But because we've got the increase in salaries, which is required, we've got the increased cost of food, supplies, delivery fees, then in return, we're gonna have to increase our prices. So what I proposed is that we increase the elementary lunch to three fifty a plate and breakfast a dollar fifty. Free and re, or reduced will remain the same, forty and thirty cents for breakfast. The high school will be three sixty and a dollar fifty for breakfast, and snacks will go up to a dollar. And hopefully this will help.
Unless, unless, unless.
Now, if we, if we get, get the permission that we're all gonna be free again next year, none of this will come.
Exactly, snacks, which will still be a dollar.
Those snacks will, but the rest of this will not come to pass if we get approval to be free again, you know, just the snack part. But we just have to wait and see, they'll let us know about August fifteenth or something like this.
Yeah, maybe the post light, the eighteen. Do you need a, do you need a?
She's got a paper for signature.
Or we need to just wait and go.
No, we're gonna have to go ahead and make that, because she's gonna get.
Well, I have to fill out the free reduced lunch application and it has to be on there, so we have to go ahead and make a decision as far as that goes.
Do I have a motion to approve Ms. Moody's, uh, child nutrition price increase for fiscal year twenty-three?
I guess there's no choice, is there?
We wish there were.
How much did it go up? Quite a bit?
Yeah, let's see, the high school was ten ninety-five, and they went about fifty-five cents, because I know now over, over Cherokee County, they were charging about what we were, they pushed ours up to three eighty-five.
We've tried to keep ours lower than most surrounding places for years.
You know, and, and I did put on that letter there, but, you know, this is something, we'll have to see how it goes, and maybe something we have to revisit, because we can change that price at any time. I mean, you know what, man, just because we're looped into it right now, don't mean we couldn't do something with it later, but I, I hope we don't have to, but everything's just really, when Lester can't, it's just terrible, isn't it? I mean, the process.
Well, the issue you've got is, uh, based on the school, uh, or on the state budget, uh, we're getting a set reimbursement rate right now. So for this fiscal year, based on that budget from the state, we had to increase the salaries for all those employees to a minimum of thirteen dollars an hour or two and a half percent increase on their salary, whichever is greater. Plus those matching benefits go up with the increase in the salaries. So for those costs, for those costs to go up, also your food costs and delivery costs to go up, and your reimburse, reimbursement rate stays the same, that reduces, uh, your cash flow, okay? There are certain months during the year, say like December, okay, when we have several days where we don't, uh, have any, have any meals served. That reimbursement that we get in the next month may not be enough to pay our payroll and our vendors. So we've had to loan, you know, specifically twenty thousand dollars, I think it was in January or February, just so that we could pay those bills. And then when the big reimbursement came in for March, you know, we paid that loan back. So that reimbursement rate needs to go up, um, I, you know, and if we go to, uh, if they don't renew that, then we're forced to go with the prices that she's presented to you. That's the same example, just like PRC.
That's hours will increase again, correct?
They will increase again to, to a minimum of fifteen dollars an hour.
Next year.
Next year.
So, but additionally, that's why we always try to have schools at one o'clock, that way we can feed all of our students. We're always working with the teachers to, to go through the cafeteria to order things, to, you know, try to stay with child nutrition policy because every dollar, it's a break even at best, and every dollar makes a difference.
Well, based on what she said, you know, we usually put the pricing and things in the handbook, but since this is something that may indeed have to come back to you and then you readjust it, do we just need to leave it out?
I put it on our website.
And just say.
See, I'll see child nutrition website for lunch.
Yeah, we'll be, you know, by the time school starts, and then we can go in there and change it anytime we want to.
Well, and since we're not front and center, we can go in and change it too if we put it there in there.
So we don't have to vote on this?
Yeah, we do have to vote on this.
My, my motion that we accept Ms. Moody's update on the nutrition policy, on the nutrition.
Have a motion on the Florida to accept Ms. Moody's child nutrition price increase for fiscal year twenty-three. Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Pursuant to the provisions of North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, Prince C's A, Prince C's three, and one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, Prince C's C, I move that the Grand County Board of Education go into closed session to receive advice from Ms. Ellen Davis, Attorney for Grand County Schools Board of Education, which advice comes within the purview of the attorney-client privilege. This advice will be general and legal, and general legal advice and legal issues on legal matters. Pursuant to the provision of North Carolina Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, Prince C's C, I move that the Grand County Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of considering personnel matters as defined and allowed by the law, North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, Prince C's A, Prince C's six, and North Carolina General Statute one fifteen C dash three twenty-one.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, action items.
So yes, I recommend that you employ Carly Anderson Odom in the position of school nurse at the elementary school.
Do I have a motion to employ, employ Carly Anderson Odom as school nurse in the elementary school?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Any opposed?
All right, and, and these are internal posts, so it's just for your information. Um, we'll be moving Diane Wiggins to the preschool teacher position.
Do I have a motion?
You'll have to have a motion on those, these are for information, so.
Oh, okay.
And because they're already.
That's right.
And we'll be moving Kitty Breton to a preschool assistant position. Um, and then.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve David Haney as a substitute?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Do I have a motion?
Let me recommend.
Okay, sorry.
I recommend that, that you employ the following student workers for summer maintenance, summer carpentry, and summer office work. Aiden Farley, Alex Knight, Lathan Buchanan, Ryan Sellers, Emma Kate Harrison, and Aubrey Nichols.
Do I have a motion to approve summer maintenance student workers, summer carpentry, and summer office student workers? Aiden Farley, Alex Knight, Lathan Buchanan, Ryan Sellers, Emma Kate Harrison, and Aubrey Nichols.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Any opposed?
I recommend that you employ Eden Orr in the position of Twenty-First Century Summer Tutor, and she'll be a student tutor.
Do I have a motion to approve Eden Orr as Twenty-First Century Student Tutor? So moved. Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Any opposed?
I recommend that you employ Maggie Knight in the position of Gear Up Student Tutor.
Do I have a motion to approve Maggie Knight as a Gear Up Student Tutor?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
So moved.
All in favor? Any opposed? Did you get that, Suzie?
And I can give you a list as well. And then the last list of recommendations I have is that you approve the contracts as presented for one-year contracts, and I, I can read those out, Suzie, I have your copy. Okay, so one-year contracts, extensions, recommendations, Blaine Adams, and I can hear if you did it. Jake Beasley, Madison Bellinger, Chandra Bowen, Crystal Hernandez, Samantha Huffer, Jesse Miller, Mariah Moody, Morgan Postle, J.C. Rogers, Diane Wiggins, Farrah Orr, Angela Noir, Megan Williams, Gabrielle Pringle, Dee Walsh, Antonia Walsh in athletic director capacity. Two-year contract recommendations, Angela Tyler and Caitlin Caranger Adams. Four-year contract extensions, Amanda Adams, Jessica Beasley, Del Farr, Paige Groves, Cheryl Lynn, Katrina Nails, Amanda Orr, Lisentia Orr, Jennifer Ooten, Leanne Ramsey, Tamara Strieber, Tina Thatch, Amber Watkins, Jessica Ware, Colleen Watt, and Cody Williams.
Do I have a ma, a motion to accept these contracts as presented by Ms. Knight? So moved. Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Any announcements?
So, yes, so one announcement is that your next graduate schedule board meeting will be June seventh at ten AM. We need to set the date for the end of the year board meeting, special call meeting for fiscal. We need to set the date for the end of the year board meeting, special call meeting for fiscal, to top our fiscal responsibility for the year. My recommendations to the board, if it pleases you, would be June twenty-eighth, that's a Tuesday. And the time is, you can keep ten o'clock, nine o'clock, whatever you choose to do.
What's your plate?
Ten o'clock, man.
Ten o'clock, okay. So the special call board meeting, for the purpose of completing fiscal procedures, would be June twenty-eighth at ten a.m. With the board while we're here, choose to go ahead and set the date for the July board meeting.
I don't have, I don't have a calendar that goes on, I will have to look.
Okay, so.
Is that okay?
Yes, so.
Do you want us to email you?
We can do that at the beginning of the June meeting, but just so you know, it probably will not be that first Tuesday, which will be the fifth, you may be looking at the second day of July, or the third, or wherever you choose that one, special call, so. It's just, you'd be back to back, and there probably won't be many more visits.
Somebody from Texas, since you.
We'll work on that one, that's all I have.
Now you're.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Second. All in favor?